I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Selectments Meeting, March 28th, 2023. May I have a roll call, please?
They say most present. We're on the cap button.
We shall sext in your name and present. And the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, you're the flag for you that we see it's a little bit. You're the Republic, we're with this band, one nation.
General God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And I'd like to thank all that are serving our country today and in the past. Um, this meeting will be recorded and as far as additions and deletions, I'd like to add a 2.4 to appointments and hearings. And that will be a solar canopy discussion. Um, they will be getting in at around 7:30, so we'll take them when they come in. I'm okay with that. Anybody else have anything?
I don't know.
Okay. Um, review and approve meeting minutes? Does anyone make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we review and approve the meeting minutes from 11:15 to 20:23. Second?
Motion's been made in second and any discussion on it?
I haven't.
You didn't have any?
Yeah.
I didn't have anything either. Um, so I guess we can move right to all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And opposed, none? So we could move right on?
I make a motion that we review and approve the meeting minutes from 2:21, 2023. Second?
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Um, well, are we going to put this one on the letterhead? We're going to leave it like it is, yes? Okay, anything else? Hmm? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye? We're both, so I guess we are moving forward. Um. So we are waiting for Andrew Johnson at 6:05, correct? Uh, so we can, we can come back to that. Um, I guess we can jump right down to appointments for 3.1.
Can we throw it into?
Yeah.
I'm making an appointment to, uh, we made a motion to appoint Mary Will Best as a member of the council and agent, we have a time limit. It looks like it's June 30th, 2025.
Correct.
2025, thank you. And secondly?
Motion's been made and seconded. Right. Any discussion on that?
Hmm? What?
We have none, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That is also unanimous.
I make a motion that we appoint Amy Harry as a member of the Plaid Row Committee for a one-year term.
Yes. Go ahead.
So do we need an expiration on that?
On the one-year term?
Probably June 30th, 25th, correct.
Twenty, twenty-four. Second?
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Welcome, Amy.
I make a motion that we appoint Kristen Berman as a member of the Plaid Row Committee for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2025. Second?
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Welcome, Kristen.
I make a motion that we appoint Amy Harrington as a member of the Plaid Row Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2026. Second?
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Another unanimous, welcome, Amy. Um, thank you very much, um, for that, so all three are appointed. And they do need to see the clerk, correct, to get sworn in. So if we could make that before your next meeting, that would be good.
For the water interns, do we have an end date that we just use for summer water? I make an appointment, I mean, excuse me, I make a, um, motion that we appoint Everett Smith as summer water intern at the Water Department. Second?
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Do you have anything to add, Dave?
Oh, he's, he'll start when he's out of his star freshman year at college.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye?
Aye? Welcome, Everett.
I made a motion that we appoint Julia Holt as summer border inter, water intern to the Water Department. Second?
Anything's been made in second, any discussion? And this, she was here last year too.
Yeah, and she graduated from North Middle Sixth Street. Uh, injured.
But? There's no more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? So welcome, Julia. 3.7.
I made a motion that we appoint Mark Mullins as water check D1 to the Water Department. Second?
Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Welcome, Mark.
And thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave, for your help.
Okay.
I made a motion that we appoint Andrew Sean as a full-time fellow at Plaid Row Med, Medic for the fire EMS department.
First.
Second?
Uh, so the mo, motion has been made in seconded, any discussions?
The only thing I can tell, is this to fill an open position?
Yes. It's because he had a resignation, wasn't it? Is this? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? None is unanimous. Um. And wha, what are you here for? Are you here for our particular?
2.2.
2.2?
That's 6:30.
That's 6:30, okay. We can jump down to, we want to talk about the 4.1. 4.1 is the granting of renewal of a junk dealer's license, MJS Metals. Um, this would be through May 1st, 2024. Um. And it looks like they submitted everything that we would need for a renewal. I didn't see anything.
Yeah, I believe it's to be right.
Yep.
What's that?
It, it's on the agenda, so it looks good.
Yeah. Um, I didn't have any questions on that, can you guys?
I did, I just don't understand. I mean, isn't there something they just could be able to automatically do without having to come for? I thought we were going to try to fix that last year.
Yeah, I know, a lot, a lot that they require the vote of the like, of the like.
I just, okay, so it's nothing that can, we just.
Nothing that could happen automatically.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, renew the junk deal license for MJS Metals through May 1st, 2024. Second?
It's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Um. All right, 4.2, Planning Board Mandatory Second Referral Notice for 22 Main Street. Well, I'll just open, uh, the discussion to anything you guys would like to talk about.
Um, my only question is, and, and really it's the planning board's place. This is just the mandatory referral, correct?
Yeah.
So, um, I, I guess I was just under the impression that MassDOT jurisdiction covered all of Route 119, um, because it's a state road. It's not a town road. So I was just surprised to see this, uh, that Billison Roy has determined that 22 Main Street is not within the limits of MassDOT jurisdiction. So I, I was just confused by that, but I assume the planning board is looking into this. And it's their purview, it's not ours.
Yeah, I know, I know that the, the last I heard, which was just not recent, was that, um, Mr. Gillis had come forward with information and, um, they were checking with the building commissioner, who I think had, was under the, the State and Branches Board.
Yeah.
That it was the, uh, the, 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 Matt Dot did need to opine on, and make a, make a determination. And so they were trying to sort that out in the last that I heard, so I don't know.
I, I would just want confirmation on that, because everything that we did for shared streets going up and down the road here was MassDOT and it required shaft permits. There wasn't anything, I mean, we had to, we had to do all the permitting. There wasn't anything that was outside their jurisdiction. Um, and we met with MassDOT during several, they were two meetings, because it was COVID time, but, um, so I was just really surprised to see that.
Yeah, I, I never heard a resolution, I'll, I'll find the resolution. I, I will find out whether that's been resolved and what the resolution.
All right, so I guess my only comment on this would be, I, I would want clarification from MassDOT that it actually is outside their jurisdiction. It might be that there isn't a, Shaft is the permitting agency, I believe, of MassDOT or the permitting division. Um, so I, I, maybe a permit isn't required, but isn't it their jurisdiction? So anyway, it could just be terminology, I don't know, but, that's all. My only comment on that.
Um, I, I agree with you. Um, I also had the same concern in regards to that. Um, but I did look at the first referral and the referral, the first referral does have a document from the building commissioner that does date the same thing. Um, but I still would want, I also would want clarification.
Same thing as what I stated, or same thing as what Billison Roy.
Same thing as what Billison Roy asked. Um.
Because I, I guess my question would be just in general, with us putting in sidewalks, et cetera, where doesn't MassDOT have jurisdiction? Um, uh, because everything that we've looked at for sidewalks, yeah, they have.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Well, I have, I, you know, I, I do have some concerns in regards to the traffic pattern that's in that particular area. I think that, um, there has been, well, I'll even say, driving by there on a Saturday and having somebody back a pickup truck right onto 119 coming into the, the area is very hazardous. Um, so there, I'm, I'm hoping that the planning board does look into, uh, the, uh, the safety of that particular area, um, but.
That's also within the section that we, um, indicated on the UTWP grant.
Correct.
Study for curb cuts and traffic control, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, definitely.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm hoping that the, the planning board is too. So how would you like to have this worded? I have, um, the VOS would want clarification that this project is not within the limits of DOT jurisdiction, MassDOT jurisdiction?
It is not within MassDOT jurisdiction.
Anything else?
Well, I think we should mention, they should know what we've been saying, you know, that they also, make sure that they, um, are aware of the, the work that we submitted regarding the curb cuts as well. Could have you done the appearance?
Mr. Chairman?
Hang on one second, Lori.
I didn't hear what you said, right? The UTWP grant submission, was that what you're talking about?
No. Go ahead, Lori.
I just wanted you to know that, yes, the planning board is, um, dealing with that. They did not accept the first, um, dot that came off of a website as accurate location. And it was also mentioned about the grant and the fact that that area was in the study.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just want to make sure you're aware.
Yeah. So do we need to address that then?
No.
They're looking at it, I'd rather.
Nope.
Yeah, I would, I would rather let them do it, so I, but I, I want to leave our comment in. Do you want to leave the comment that I just read, or? Unless we say that the planning board will make the right decision, that and everything?
I played in on the comment.
Okay.
I'm finding the dot, I trust the carnival to do it, was what I read from there, but I defer to the chair.
Put them both in.
I don't need the, the, about the. Oh, about Justin.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
If that's okay, you're welcome. And is that okay if I write this after, after section? Want to do it right now?
Okay.
Okay.
I think we have some, uh.
Yes.
Or maybe it's just me.
I think it's just the chair, though.
Yeah.
We can do that, I can, I can put that again. So I'll say that the VOS would want clarification that this project is not within the limits of MassDOT jurisdiction and that we will trust the planning board with the decision.
Yeah. Thank you.
And we don't need to vote on that, right?
Yeah, well, that's good.
Hmm, or that will go over next time? That stuff aside. Um, okay. Uh, 4.3, uh, acceptance of picture donations for the annual report 2022. Did you guys get to come through those pictures?
I think there were a couple of them that were repeats. They were very good, but there were a couple of them that were repeats. Um, so I didn't know if these were, okay, so we're paging through the pages, you know, and so like this one, so that one's there. And then if you go through later, there it is again.
Right.
So I didn't know if it was positioned on the page or if it, you know, through the report, or these, all the ones that are in the report. And so one of them gets repeated somewhere else.
I think it's just the inadvertent repeat.
Yeah, so there's, there are, there were two of them, I thought, that were repeated. One is of the library in a rainstorm and, um.
This one. I love the winter ones on the comments, they're really pretty.
I'm not letting them, but no, I liked them. I thought they were great.
Yeah, I did too. I, I think Sabrina's doing a great job with that, with the report.
Yes.
So if, if we're all good with that, we just let them know that we're all good with that, right?
I just think we, I think we should want a motion to accept them, the photo.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the photo donation for donations for the annual report of 2022. Second? Wait a minute.
Yeah.
It's 2022.
Trying to advance us another year?
Oh, it gets confusing, four years and a calendar year.
We're always doing things ahead of.
Head of time, behind of.
Um, so if there's no other discussion, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Thank you for the donations.
We do.
For the individuals who did donate those. And I guess I should have had the names so we could read them off on who donated them, but I just want to say thank you. Let's see, next is the 4.4, Performance Review of Town Administrator.
All right, so I have, no, I have folders for you guys, but these are the dates. Um, so we had already, um, for Eric's, we had all passed them by. Um. And then there's three BOS ones that are exactly the same, the fifth and ninth one is the eighth jar. So, um, Sabrina put in the PDFs, the fillable PDFs. So, um. Eric already got it, right?
I'm not going to do your work, sir.
And actually, there's one, Sabrina, we can just. So, um, I, I think it's by, by charter, or whatever. We have to have a, um, the, your review is, the, the summary is public. I don't know if we have to give it to you in court. Anyway, I honestly think that, no, I've probably never done this before. This is a very first. So, but we went through, um, so in the folder, there's a performance, uh, self-evaluation. So, um, when we would like that back. Um, and I, I put these together with Callie. So it was to the, collect the self-evaluations next group Tuesday. So, um, and Sabrina has them too, Sabrina's evaluations marked on.
But that's April 4th?
It's April 4th, yeah. So if we could get the, um, self-evaluations back, um, in, to, uh, however you want to do it, just fun, you know, email it to all three of us, or whatever. If you do the fillable PDF or print it, you can give it us, but that was the date that Callie and I did. And then the three of us have to each evaluate, um, Eric based on what was in the performance evaluation that we worked at last summer.
Mm-hmm.
And I wanted to do this before I was off the board, which is the 24th. And the, it fits perfectly because the, um, one-year anniversary was May 16th. So if we could each do our performance reviews and, um, give them to Callie by the 11th. And, um, then they can be, uh, I'll work with Callie and they'll come up with the summary review. That's the public record and that would be available on the. That sound good to you guys?
Okay with that.
So that's the, um, that's what we did. So.
We still have to work out how that's being given, do we, that, I don't think that's, I mean.
I'm sorry. That doesn't have to be done in public session.
Right.
Um, we can, Callie can give the, um, some summary to all three of us. You know, or whatever, and do you, or do you want to meet with us? Do you want to meet with us individually? Um, having never done this, I, I don't know what the right way to do it is, so.
So, yes, it's typically, I mean, typically speaking, if the, if the, um, uh, if, if there's going to be a, you know, a performance evaluation with the board, it would be an executive session. And so personal evaluation. And the same for, if, if you wanted to have a. And then there would, that would, if you do the same thing with Sabrina, if you wanted to have her coming for a performance evaluation, if you felt that the board fills the need, that's really, it's really up to the board. Um, you know, I, I, I would like to, I personally would like to have a, a, a session to talk to the board about.
I would.
Yeah, I think that would be great. And if we could all do, so we'll do an executive session.
I'm good with that.
All right. And that would be on the 18th. Um, and then for, for Sabrina, hers is more like the regular performance review. That's the last two pages, I think, that are in here. Um, the, the ratings, still, I have two of them, why do I have two? Did everybody get the one that says department supervisor performance evaluation?
No.
Did I miss you?
Yeah, they did.
Did everybody get this one? This is for Sabrina.
The board selection TA. Performance evaluation. And then the regular performance appraisal.
Yeah. Um, there should be the regular.
Regular one page.
Yeah, there's this one.
I have a self-evaluation. I have the town administrator.
Missing it.
I have a performance appraisal.
Okay. So the last two that are in the manila folders are Sabrina's. And Callie gave me both of them.
Which one, Sabrina?
Um. It says performance appraisal. And it looks like this. And it says department supervisor performance evaluation. Because Sabrina's on department. So we could pick one of them if you guys prefer one over the other. Um, we could do just the performance appraisal. Appraisal. The first, um.
No, that would be just for him. Well, yeah, really.
Everybody gets a self-evaluation. For Sabrina, the people being evaluated do the self. Return in the next group. Yeah.
He does, we should do a few. And then people.
No. This, this is for Eric.
Yes, for him.
And then this is for.
So do we want to do both of these? Town administrator here.
But that's because it's for every, it's for every department head.
Right.
So there's some of those that I have to evaluate, some of those that you guys have to evaluate.
Yeah, and so, and Eric, you would be evaluating Sabrina as well.
So, yes, yeah, that's what I was trying to.
We, we will, Sabrina will report all of that.
Right.
So, um, she gets, well, you say one. So, um, so that's what this is.
Right.
All right?
That makes.
And, uh, I didn't know whether to do one or both, having never done this before, so we get both of them. So dates are the 4th self-evaluation, come back to the board. And then the 11th, we provide our evaluations to Callie for. And then, um, on the 18th, we schedule a, um.
That could be such a.
And executive session for you, yeah. And we, we could include Sabrina too.
We, we would have to schedule a separate executive session for Sabrina.
Oh, we would?
Well, it would.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it would be, I mean, we wouldn't both be in the same.
Yes.
It would be, it would, it would be, you know, it would be a different, for a different purpose. And also, I think it would be, I mean, I think Sabrina can, you could ask Sabrina whether or not she thought there was need to have an executive session to discuss it. Or you could instruct me to just have a meeting with Sabrina and the best that we could, I could do as also one of her supervisors.
Oh.
And then it wouldn't have to be an executive session, I could do.
And actually, while we're talking about that, I had been many years ago assigned as the liaison for the, um, administrative assistant. So, um, seeing as I will be exiting the board at the end of April, maybe we need to think about another liaison, differently.
We'd probably wait till we have the third board.
Oh, good idea. Okay, so I'll remain.
Things would probably need to be rejiggered.
So, Sabrina, it's up to you whether you want another executive session then, or whether you just want to meet with me in there. Um, so.
The second one, is that what you said?
Okay. And, and that's, that's all I have on that, unless there are other questions, there are.
My one day for now.
So it is 6:29, but we can actually start. We've got 10 seconds, but 10 seconds. Our one-day special liquor license for Townsend Congregational Church.
Make the motion in there. That's it, go.
Yeah, we can do that.
I make a motion that we grant a one-day special liquor license to Townsend Congregational Church.
Great.
That, seriously?
All those are named, so now we can discuss.
Steph, you want to come up? I'm not here.
Old habits are hard to break.
Would you like to come up?
What is this for?
Well, we're on the clock.
Not here. Uh, it's, it's for, um, my church's, um, 14th annual, uh, charity auction fundraiser for the church. And, um, we hired a, you know, service to, uh, sell beer in line.
Okay, for that. Um, this service, I know that it's. This service, I know that another organization has used them, their license. I like that they're tip certified, their license, they have their own liability, which is even better. The, you're going to be serving within the confines of a room or whatever. It's not, there's nothing outside or anything, right? It's all on the inside.
It's open to the public.
Right, no, but I mean, it's, nobody's going to be walking out with a. As far as the one-day liquor license conditions, you did read those and you understand those, that's what was given.
I didn't.
Okay. Outside of that, I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, mine only was, and I saw that they were tip certified, and they had them filled, and they were so.
Yeah.
That's my concerns.
Yeah. From the view, okay, do you have any questions for us before we vote?
No, it's just made for your team.
Okay.
From 5 to 10.
From 5 to 10, so. Put that in the motion for us?
We already have a.
Well, we already have a motion.
Can I, can I just, should we amend it for the date, or is that?
No, I think it's on the application.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you have it, so we can sign them. That's one that we do all have to sign in the name.
And is it some paperwork sent to the church?
I can send it to the church, or I can, if you know where the committee pick it up, either way.
Okay, let's go in.
Yeah.
Okay, good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll be happy to.
Did we hear anything from Andrew Johnson in regards to today?
Well, I asked, Sabrina, Sabrina, they'd reach out and touch base with him, but.
Is the door unlocked downstairs?
Yeah.
It is. It's after 6, and it's a tooth day, and I know we have to go to, when, last Thursday.
Well, I think we extended it.
It is extended, okay, alright. Because it was locked.
We, I think Sabrina's double checking.
And you have to do the stone thing.
Chocolate, yeah, violation of community protocols. I think we are on 4.5. Yeah, so we're all set, that, okay. So 4.5 Review and Approve Nashua River's Wild and Scenic Stewardship Council 2022 Report.
I make a motion that we approve Nashua River's Wild and Scenic Stewardship Council 2022 Report.
Second.
Please make an exception. Any discussion? Can we have some information on exactly what this is and what, why we're?
Oh, I can tell you.
What are they?
Oh, okay, well, there are community grants, and there are land protection grants. That because we are wild, and because we're, Swanacook River is part of the Wild and Scenic. It was, you know, Nashua, Nissipit, Swanacook, whatever. So there, there are funds that are distributed to the, the committee, the Wild and Scenic Committee. And their, their purpose is to distribute those funds to the communities within the Wild and Scenic area for the Nashua, Swanacook, Nissipit, Wild and Scenic. And so there's an application process. We, the town of Townsend, this year that we're looking at the report, we received $4,533 for the Adam Dam to look at the erosion along the bank. This was, in a, this was our second time to receive. Mike Crowley had applied for this about a year ago. We had it the year before. We had been awarded, I can't remember the exact amount, to do the walkway. And that was the first phase, this is the second phase. And the town was actually awarded the third phase next year, is that why, 23, I guess, to do invasive, invasive.
Japanese, not we.
Yeah. That's the only one I know. Oh, another species, yes, there is, what's called, anyway, there it is. But anyway, so this is the report. They have to make a report to every select board in the towns, whether they receive the grant or not. And, and the board has to accept it. That's part of the process. So we're not awarding grants, these are already awarded. We're, we're just accepting the report. They're noting the. So. So that's what this is.
Any other discussion on that?
Yes. Andrew Johnson is trying to board.
Okay, I'll keep an eye on them.
Yeah.
He's not here yet, but if I see him popping, I will lift a chair and help.
Partly should be able to.
Yeah, I'll just let you know, if I see him pop up.
Alright, so all those in favor of accepting the report?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I don't want to get into a deep discussion on. Each one of these are going to be probable in discussion.
I think actually 4.7 is relatively quick, there's only a couple things we need to.
Okay, so we'll go to 4.7, Proposed Language for CPA Adoption.
Yeah, I want to apologize to the members of the board. The, the first paragraph of this is for me, a memorandum, a different memorandum, so. Please disregard the, the, the introductory paragraph, which talks about a ballot question, right? Doesn't have anything to do. But the language for the town meeting warrant article for a proposed CPA ballot question is relatively straightforward, laid out of the statute. So I label it here as question one, and obviously it's going to be whatever question we put it on the ballot. There could be question two. I think the override should be question one, so. But if, if we put it on the ballot in September, we'll see how many questions there are. But that language, the, the main paragraph is the language that you have to have to adopt the CPA. The only special information we have to have is the second piece, which is, number one, the total amount of the surcharge. We may choose 1% or 2% or 3% as the proposal from the board select. So that's the one choice that we have to make. And the second choice we have to make is, of the four possible exemptions, which one the board wants to recommend? Okay, so those four possible exemptions are property owned by someone who qualifies for low-income housing, or low to moderate income senior housing. The second one is class three commercial and class four industrial properties. The third one is $100,000 of the value of each residential property. And the fourth one is $100,000 of the value for each class three commercial or class four industrial. So my, my suggestion would be one and three, which is low income and low to moderate income seniors, and $100,000 off of residential housing. Would be the ones that the board suggests, but, you know, obviously, the board could have any or none of them.
Right, and it's not something that we need to make a decision on tonight.
Yes, it is.
It is.
We're going to put it on the 18th.
If we wanted to be on the, on the annual town meeting warrant, we need to make a decision. I mean, we could probably make a decision next week. To, but, but the, the annual town meeting warrant closes on the 7th of, I mean, the, well, not for, the annual town meeting warrant closes when the board decides. But we only have two more meetings after tonight before, and we, and I think we're going to want to have the warrant finalized by the 18th. So, oh, we just have a.
And it needs to be posted though, right? Two weeks before, yeah, so it has to be the 18th, yeah.
Well, no, yeah, I would say, the 18th would be, it has to be posted on the 18th.
Yeah.
Because that's two weeks before town meeting.
So the two things, you're saying that we can make those two things tonight and fall, and will fall into the timeline that we have, okay?
We will put a, a warrant article.
That's it.
Okay.
The post, the warrant has to be posted on the 18th.
On the 18th.
Yeah, okay.
So what's the percentage and then the exemption?
The percentage and the exemption. The exemption's really come down to, I mean, I, I think, I don't, based on what I've heard from the board previously, I don't think there's any argument about whether or not we want to have the low-income exemption and low to moderate income senior exemption. I don't think anybody was arguing that we shouldn't have that.
I think that's correct. I have one question though, if, I mean, do we know the amount of income that fits in in section two? Do we know what is considered low or low to moderate income?
When we go by the AMI?
Yeah, and for middlesex county.
It's like 70K.
It's actually pretty high. We are counted as middlesex, it's pretty high.
So if your annual income is equivalent to that or less, you don't pay this, pay into the CPA.
You are.
Exempt.
You, you, yeah, you would have to go and file with the assessors for an abatement, because you'd have to prove it.
Yeah.
Right.
By presenting tax records and, you know, whatever.
But in doing a lot of the, the housing authority stuff that I had, a lot of individuals didn't fit into that category.
Correct.
So it would be beneficial to the individuals within that category.
The, the, the second one that I thought, when, when we last discussed this, that there were, you know, general consensus on, for the first $100,000 of residential, of your residential, the value of your residential property. The other two are based on industrial and commercial properties, and that's, is a full exemption or a partial exemption.
We got to talk about that, that would be. There wasn't a lot of chatter about those.
I didn't, so, yeah, so.
So, I did have.
Yeah, go ahead.
If we went to a town vote and we went at 1%, then does it take a second town vote to increase the, to the senate?
Yes.
So whenever we go to town vote, we have to revote again.
Yeah, if you, if you went to, for one of, for, for a certain percentage, you'd have to have another vote to change that percentage.
It's not like the board's preparing to.
Yeah.
And do we have to go to a ballot vote as well? So we'd have to do.
Yeah.
And to do the, to change the exemptions as well.
Yeah.
You'd have to, you'd have to go through the whole process again, and once you have a, a, once you've adopted it, you can't rescind that for five years.
Yes, okay.
The ones that, if, if we, we vote at town meeting and the ballot says yeah, and they say yes, and on the ballot it says yes, you can't have a vote to rescind it for five years. You're required to maintain it legally.
So I, I just, on the percentage, the 1%, 2%, 3%. When the state does the match at whatever percentage they choose, every community, no matter what level, gets the first round of the match. If there's a second round or a third round, if you're a 1% community, you don't necessarily get the, the other rounds of the match. I just want to note that.
If we chose.
If we choose 1%, 1% always gets the first round, not necessarily the other.
Yeah, now, the first round of the match is based on the amount of funds that you bring in, not the percentage that you're set at, so.
Yes.
A 1%, or 2%, or 3%, you're still going to get a, a percentage from the state based on the, the funds that the, that you brought in with your surcharge. That's what it's, what you're, you're matching its pay for.
The state sometimes does a first round of match, and then they do, they have additional funds left, they do additional, they give out more money.
Right, they tend to give out more money.
But they don't do it for the communities that are 1%, they tend to do those that are higher.
But I see it as any monies that are coming in will free up our ability to be able to use that monies for other things.
That's great.
I'm comfortable with the two exemptions setting now, but I'm not comfortable starting at 3%, but I'm comfortable wanting to.
Okay.
Just to, you know, when I hit that.
So just to talk about that a little bit, if you are, if your property is assessed at $400,000, for example, and we exempt the first $100,000, alright, that means we're cutting the assessment of the property by a quarter. Alright, so $400,000, that's around maybe an $8,000 bill, I'm just coming up with a, so your tax bill is $8,000. It gets cut by a quarter, which means it would then be $6,000.
Well, if, what we, what we would, what gets cut by a quarter is what we're basing the, the.
The assessment.
The assessment on.
Yeah.
We're not cutting your tax by a quarter.
No, no, we're not, your taxes are still $8,000, but to figure the percentage, alright? So you would be looking as, so.
As if your property was only $3,000, $300,000.
$300,000, therefore it would be a $6,000 tax payment, although you're really only, you're really going to pay the $8,000. But for CPA purposes, it's as if your tax bill is $6,000. And then you take 1% of that, which means $60 a year, is what your part would be at 1%.
Right.
So if it's at 2%, that's 60 becomes 1.2. And if you're 3%.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I think that's just a poor, so for, for every, you know, $5,000 of your tax bill, you're, you are, you are going to be paying less than $100 towards this surcharge. Because you're, the first $100,000 value of your house is taken away, and then your, your, it's, it's 2%. So it would be, it would be less than $100 on the $5,000.
Right.
It'd be.
It's the value of your house, not your tax bill, because a lot of us have exemptions on our tax bill.
That's true, it's based, it's based on the value of your house.
I get that.
Sure, no, that's, that's fair, that's fair.
So it's kind of a separate calculation from your tax bill.
Right.
So I guess what I'm saying is it isn't, you know, a huge amount of money.
It's not going to be, yeah, it's not going to be a huge, a huge increase, but I'm looking at, at it more at the benefits of being able to do this and what the town gets out of the, the amount of money that goes in here. Is going to be able to allow us to provide some needed repairs to historic buildings. There are other things that we can earmark the funding coming in from the state on the other end, so that we can support other services and keep other services for the citizens as opposed to cutting things every year because of, of anything. So, you know, it's a very good, it's a very good thing on, on both sides, so.
So what, so the exemptions, one and three?
One and three, I, I agree as well.
Okay, so.
So what you would say, what you'd be looking for is a vote that says, make a motion to put the CPA question on the annual town meeting warrant with the language provided, including a 2% surcharge and exemptions one and three.
To process their charge and exemptions one and three.
We've got it so moved, we've got it so moved. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very animus. Eric, thank you for helping us out.
You're welcome. I just wanted to let you know, I know we have a few minutes for our next meeting and.
Johnson is on, so I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson if he can unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Hi, first of all, I, I just want to acknowledge, I've kind of made a fool of myself here and apologize for not being respectful of all of your time. And I'm glad we are connecting now, so my apologies for that.
Well, I thank you for that, but we would be more than glad to hold out for something like this. I think that what you're, you're asking to provide for our townspeople, I think, is important enough for us to be able to make some good decisions here in regards to that. How would you like to proceed in? Um, how would you like to proceed, Andrew? Do you wanna just discuss what you, what you're proposing here?
Absolutely, yeah. So I, I stopped in to speak with Eric a couple, maybe a couple of months ago now. And, um, I'll tell you a little bit of background on the farm, so I started the Good Food Farm with some folks in Ashby. In November of twenty twenty one, and we had our first season last year. Most of our customers are in the Boston area, um, we do a CSA, we do some, um, farmers markets. And then sell to a few restaurants, um, and that's mostly because that's where we've had traction with, uh. Getting business, but I'd really love to focus on growing our customer base here locally. And, um, I happen to be on the end of a dead end road in Ashby, um, with, you know, the only traffic are people coming to the property. Um, explicitly, so I'm trying to find somewhere locally that we could market our produce and eggs. Um, and I naturally thought of, um, the towns in common, being that it's on to, uh, a, a very busy intersection. And it's about, you know, uh, seven, ten minutes from where I live. And so we were wondering about a potential of, uh, basically, it looked like a, you know, a farmer's market in the sense that we just set up. A ten by ten, um, tent and, um, consistently, once a week, be there with our, our goods. And then, um, you know, maybe put up a temporary signage directing people to where we were located. Uh, Eric and I had spoken about the, uh, I don't know what's, what side that is of the, the common, but the, the side with the parking lot. That would be a little bit more accessible for folks, so maybe by the main intersection there, uh, we could, you know, next to the appliance. Place, I forget what those two roads are, maybe we could have a sign that pointed people in the direction with, uh, fresh vegetables that we put up, you know. Right as we were setting up. And, uh, that's sort of the vision, it's just, it's kinda with the idea of being able to provide, um, our products more locally.
So this is, uh, Friday afternoons between three and six.
That is what I had proposed, yeah, I'm not, I'm not wedded to a specific time, um. And I am also in the process of determining my exact schedule of farmers markets, I'll be working this, um. This year, but there's, we don't have anything currently on Friday, and I, I think that would be a, a natural time for, you know, getting a lot of people passing by.
Okay. Um, I had, um, also invited, there's two other, um, um. We have the Historic District Commission who has, um, some jurisdiction over signage. And I had asked them to, if they had some time, if they could come join us, uh, which I did see, A- Alicia is here. And, uh, I also asked, uh, Roger, who is our, um, Parks and Cemetery Superintendent.
Okay.
In, in regards to just some feedback from him, because they are boards that are, um. Uh, that do have some sort of, uh, say over this particular area, and I just wanted to hear their, what they're inputted. Um, so, uh, Alicia, if you don't mind, can you give me two minutes in regards to the signage? There are the protocols, the typical, um, bylaw signage that they need to follow in regards to that.
Um, well, it would, we would jump in on this and review this if there was a sign going up within the. Historic District.
Okay.
So where i- it seems to me this conversation is either the common or maybe behind the. Town hall is what I'd heard before. A, a sign put in, the intersection would come under our review, which would mean duration. Where it's placed, stuff like that. If it's on Jeff Street, not our jurisdiction. If it was a sign put over on the Hart Library property, that would not have to come before us either. So, um, he would just come with an application, uh, describing what type of sign it is and where he wants it, and the commission would review it.
Okay, and even for a temporary sign?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then, uh, Roger, do you have any input in regards to what, um, they need to be looking into on that?
Yeah, this has come up before, Chaz, uh, sorry about the background noise. This has come up before and the parking lot is, is not necessarily an issue to be used, I, I don't see a problem with it. As long as, you know, this is open to all, all, not just to one. If we're gonna have a farmer's market, I believe there should be everybody involved. Anybody would like to saw their wares there. Uh, I do have a meeting coming up April twelfth. And I can run this by the commissioners to, to get them to sign off on it. But my feelings are that this has been presented before and in the past it wasn't an issue.
It wasn't an issue.
Yeah, it was not an issue to use the parking lot.
Um, and then the typical, the, you know, the, the parties would have to pick up after themselves and take care of their own, uh, rubbish removal and that kinda stuff.
Correct, yeah, we don't have the resources to take care of that, but yeah, they would have to pick up after themselves, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much for your input. Um, any input from the selectmen?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I do too.
I'm interested, um, with the Park Commission said about being opening to oth- other people who like, like. If that's what, I don't know if that's what the board is saying, you know, we're just talking about opening it to, uh, the one person. And are we talking about, um, this just being something we're opening up, um, patomic? Or is there, uh, rental fee that goes back to the Park Commission, um, to help? Especially if we open it up to a larger group, so I'm kind of wondering what, what the Board of Selectmen is thinking on that.
My thought is we should just start, this is our only query, we haven't gotten another query, if someone else queries. Um, Eric on this, then, you know, depending on whatever. Um, I, I would wanna see an agricultural commission seated and have them be the jurisdiction over this. Be the, rather than the Board of Selectmen, you know, we say, yeah, good, we, we want the farmer's market. You know, Fridays through the sixth, and then someone else, I don't wanna be having the selectmen out there figuring out who gets what location for one.
Most towns, I know a lot of people were looking both in farmer's market, most of the towns, they do not shoot the board of health of all, of all people. But then, again, they're so responsible for anything that comes into, and that was the other question we had. Andrew, is, uh, the preparation you're done, is that affected, um, by the Ashby Board of Health before you sell anything?
Say that again, so is the preparation I'm doing with the, the goods I'd be selling?
The selling of your produce, or I believe you have chicken, eggs, or whatever, do you have your, uh, Board of Health inspection before you can sell?
So, um, I'm not currently doing like, uh, any selling in Ashby directly, so, but an example would be. Um, we'll be doing the Union Square Market in Somerville, and so, uh, if you're selling. Uh, certain types of goods, they require you to apply, uh, with the Health Department, uh, but for. Raw, unprocessed vegetables, um, and farm-fresh eggs, we do not need to get a permit from the Somerville. Um, Health, Health Board, um, usually though, they, they do have an inspector who comes by just to make sure the eggs are stored at. Less than, uh, or equal to forty-five degrees Celsius, so, um.
Is he not selling chicken, only the eggs?
I'm not, yeah, at the moment, we're just doing the farm-fresh eggs and the produce.
Okay.
So, and I, can I speak to one more thing?
Sure.
So, when I, uh, when I brought up this idea, it was very much with the kinda, um. Image in mind of many farmers who just will park their truck, sell sweet corn, that kinda deal, like a, it's like a pop-up. Um, as far as what comes along with running a proper farmer's market, were this to turn into that. Uh, I don't know if that would be within my bandwidth for the coming season, um, but, you know, depending what that would require of me, so. Um, I'm coming at this more of the angle of like, you know, somebody who, who's got a food truck or a, a truck and they're trying to sell their. Um, their sweet corn, that kinda thing. If, if more people wanted to join, I would love that, and I think it would be good for all parties involved. Um, but I, I do know from the other farmer, farmer's markets I've been a part of. You know, a lot of them are, are five oh one C threes, and a lot of them have a board, and a lot of them, you, there's a big application process, and. I could imagine that, that would take some serious time to get in place.
And, and I'm, I'm in the mindset that, um, uh, Veronica brought up, is that, you know, we would deal with this as a one. A one-person thing for right now, and if it does, anybody else who's interested and that they, they come to the town administrator. Then I think that we would need to, to definitely have a further discussion on how we're gonna move forward. Um, but I think, I think for tonight, um, since you have brought this up and you have done the, um, the research and the time and effort. Um, I think we should just deal with this as a one, um, one and done kinda thing, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
All right, uh, as, as far as, and the only reason why I brought in, um, the other individuals in the Board of Health. Think you should also check with them, the Towns Health, just so that we, we've touched all bases. Um, I just wanna be, uh, very transparent with our other boards and commissions to know that we are addressing this issue, number one. And number two is we wanna definitely have their input, so I would like, like it also that, um, you just touch base with the, uh, Historic District Commission. And just talk with them in regards to the signage, so that we're okay.
Okay.
And, and then we can have Parks and Cemetery go ahead and, and, and have a discussion, Roger, moving, moving forward. Once we vote tonight on whether or not we wanna move forward.
Yeah, I can talk to the, uh, I can talk to the commissioners and have them, if, if they're good with it, I can drop a letter on the twelfth. And get that letter over to folks, with the approval from them.
Do they have to approve the Christmas trees that are sold in the common, Roger?
Yes, yeah, for Alliance Club, yeah, they do, yeah.
They vote on that as well.
Yeah.
Okay. So are we okay with that? So do we wanna vote? Yeah, okay.
One question, one question before you. Now, are, are we voting, are you voting right now on a certain range of time? Like, my season is typically, um, June through October, and, you know, assuming this went well and, and people. Started to get used to it and there was some traction, we'd love to do it during our whole season, um. Of course, there's some questions as to how, how well it'll go and all that, but is the vote for that, that whole, the whole upcoming season?
Um, the vote would be for, um, how you have proposed here from late May to October.
Okay, great.
Something that you wanted to extend, then we can, you can talk to the town administrator and then we can go from there.
Okay, great, and I'll, I will just, yeah, I, I'm very hopeful that it could be a good thing, given the location. And the, um, the historical, or sorry, the, the tie to farming in the, in this community and all that, but, um. You know, i- if it is the kinda thing where we're selling a hundred dollars of produce, you know, it wouldn't be sustainable for us, obviously. Um, we'd have to, we have to spend that time selling it somewhere where we're really selling it, but I think, I think it could be a, a great outlet. So we really wanna to go for it and put up signs and give it our best shot, so.
Yep, and I just wanna make sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is on everything, so we're all, we're all in agreement. Um, I think this will be a great thing for our community, we've talked about it, or it's been talked about, that we don't have something like this available. And, and I think this would be. Um, so having said that, are we, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we allow Andrew Johnson to set up his farmer's store, the Good Farm. On the town common parking lot from May to October, twenty twenty four.
Three. Twenty twenty three.
Twenty, never get these days right, twenty twenty three.
From three to six on Friday.
Three, three to six on Friday. Second.
Motion's been made, and second, is any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. So, um, Andrew, the next step would be just to make sure that you make an appointment with the Historic District Commission about the signs.
Okay.
And Roger will bring it in front of the, um, cemetery and parks, and then we'll, we can go from there.
Wonderful.
And definitely talk to the, the Board of Health here in town to find out what else you, you might need to do.
Okay, I, I will definitely stop by and, and do that. Thank you so much for your time and my apologies again for the snafu.
You are, one second, Elise, did you have something else?
Um, I did, Andrew, um, would direct you to, uh, the Town of Townsend website. And you can find under Boards Committee, some commissions, you can see the Historic District Commission. You can find an application there. That you can fill out, there's also an email address that you can contact the commission through if you have questions. And we'll help you get that application through without any hassles. As understandings, to help you understand it all, so feel free to reach out, we're more than happy to help you get where you need to go.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Roger.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night, Roger.
Good night, now.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you. Bye.
And then, hi there. Um, we can do two point three, cause it's. So two point three meeting with school committee members, read the plan of override, um, promotion for the town meeting. Wanna come up and have a. Culture seat? Um, Ronnie, you, you had requested to have this in here, but you wanna just open it up to what we would.
Yeah, we need to know what we're, um, doing. If we're going for an override and the, uh, what the assessment is to the town and what we need to put on the ballot. And how it will be ruled, rolled out by the school committee.
Um, well, uh, first off, we, we have given assessments as far as I know, um, the last school committee meeting, uh, nothing changed. As far as the budget, there will be at, at least a small change, we just didn't have all the numbers together. Um, and that was gonna reflect, uh, the GIC terms, um, numbers that came back, two hundred thousand dollars, less than we anticipated. And we were able to, um, eliminate one school bus, and so those will come off, we just didn't have the language and all the numbers. Uh, to vote that in in the last meeting, but that definitely will, we're still looking. Uh, on where we get more money from the state, looking at what we can do for the budget, but as it stands right now. Um, what we've approved is, um, very close to what it is right now. And so the next steps really are, we need to know from the towns, um, I don't know where your budget is. Um, as far as, um. You know, uh, where you stand as far as the services for the town, because we're, we are concerned about making sure that the town has the services they need. I don't know how much over the assessment that we've given you, um, what you can, um, afford. Uh, which would dictate on how much the override would be. Um, so there's a lot of information from the town that we would need, um, to, uh, move forward as far as specifics. For, uh, whether there's an override and how much it is.
When we had our budget meetings, this really didn't deviate much from what we had originally said back in November.
Right, so I think, I think the amount of the override, um, and I apologize to have it on. Uh, I, I think it's eight hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and fifteen thousand. Yeah, I think that, that, that's the approximate number, I have the specific number for the, for the ballot. The specific number exists on my desk for the ballot question, um, uh, but yeah, so that's the, that's the amount over what we had budgeted. And let the school department know that. For school.
Okay. Um, uh, you know, as far as our message going out, we do have our communication, uh, subcommittee is starting to look at. Um, how to, um. How to roll out the message, how to, um, you know, get all the pertinent information, nothing has changed from the budget, um, message that the superintendent put out. And his budget, uh, message, uh, the reasons for the override are all still the same. Uh, we are trying desperately to help all the students recover from the pandemic. Um, with the pandemic, we, we've needed extra services to help bring kids back up. We've had, um, an increase in, um, out of district placements and participation placements, uh. You know, mainly due to, uh, COVID and less setbacks. Um, the added district placement went up fourteen percent in their tuition. Um, that was one of our largest increases of, we have close to a million, I think, I think it was over a million dollars. Between the number of students that we were placing and the fourteen percent increase in tuition. Um, those things are completely out of our control, we cannot, um, affect that, um, those numbers they're handed to us. Um, our insurance went up by about thirteen or fourteen percent of them for all the town and everybody else knows. And again, insurance costs are something that we don't have control over. Um, so in trying just to make sure that we're keeping all the services for the students, that they don't fall back even further. The budget that we have forward, we're hoping is gonna keep us going forward, uh, with progress with the students.
Okay, so we're looking. Okay, so we're looking at specifically how we're gonna, how you are gonna be doing and what. What we need to do to to for the override.
You said the outer district uh, placements went up significant, um, in number and of the actual cost. And you said it's not something you can control, but it it is, right? I mean, what are, what are they doing in the student district? To meet these children's needs internally, so they're not.
Internally, what we're doing is um, with the S R money, we've had a number of interventions. Um, but again, with students especially, I believe in the younger grades. Um, having stayed home, they don't have a civilization of being in the school when the school proposed because of COVID. Um, that set them back. Then children that we were um, able to kind of service and keep in the classroom. Some of them fell back far enough uh, that they now um, qualify for other services.
And who makes the final decision that they go out of district?
I believe there are um, external um, evaluations that get done. Uh, I'm not completely familiar with the full process of special education. Um, but I do know that there are external um, evaluations that uh, we do go through and we do not have any final.
Say something? Okay, so we are looking at an eight hundred twenty thousand dollar override, roughly, maybe a little bit less. Um, last year we requested what, two hundred fifty thousand and it failed. Um, so I guess I keep looking at every week, the school newsletter comes out, the N M R S D newsletter. And I keep waiting for something to be put in there and I understand you have a communication committee. There's not a single thing. So if you're a parent in this district, you don't know. That Townsend at least is going to be asking for an eight hundred twenty thousand dollar override, which is significant. Um, and you don't know why. So I don't, what is the timeline for the communication committee to get this? Word out to the families in the district?
Um, I don't have the exact timeline. I know it it is uh, very important right now. Um, I'm trying to uh, talk with. I wasn't able to get um, in touch with the chair of the communications subcommittee to find out when their next meeting is. Um, but I am letting them know that now is the time, we need to have something together and we need to. Uh, start putting stuff out, as well as the superintendent, um, obviously knows and I'm trying to let him know. We need to start, you know, talking about this, even if, you know, um, there are changes later on, we need to start talking about it right now. We're still waiting for the state, as we always wait for the state.
You know, we got an information booth set up for Earth Day?
I don't know.
I would just, the the one thing that I would would want to make clear, because I'm not sure that the school committee is aware. Unlike the other two towns, Townsend is putting it on the spring ballot. So in less than a month. There's going to be an override question on the Townsend.
April ballot. Know that was going to be on the April ballot.
The only way for it to fit into the timeline that we have in front of us, we we voted our last meeting, I think it was. Before the the ballot question.
Right, um, how does that work as far as if that number changes on how much for the override? Do we have any kind of a window with that?
Well, I mean, the 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 override amount is on the ballot. The ballot. We had to have a ballot question a certain amount of days before it goes, so the ballot could be printed. So that's going to be on the ballot. Um, i- i- if it, if it goes up, that would create a problem.
Set in stone, we've, we've uh, voted the budget and the effects cannot go up once we've done that.
So, so they can only go down, the the amount of the ballot wouldn't change. There could be, you know, part of an educational piece thing. It says eight hundred and sixteen, but we're only asking for. Five hundred, I mean, I'm just making up numbers, you know, that would be part of a, of a, of a, of a outreach piece. If the number that were. That's going to be on the actual budget is left, that's on.
Like I said, the state made the announcement that they were going to be helping out. Um, school districts with the um, special education costs and things. Um, but all they did was give a big round number of what was going out to the entire state. And they are yet to give any details to specific uh, districts on whether we're getting any money and if so, how much.
You're also questioning from what I'd see the transportation as well, so that's all the question though.
The, the thing is, what, what I at least would want to avoid is spending that last week. Before town meeting, changing the budget over and over and over again. And we will know whether the, it fails or not. Um, if it fails at the ballot box, well then. The amount that was put in will be there and the. I would recommend that we take the vote for the school separately from the rest of the general government. Um, so that, I mean, I I have no desire to do what we did last year. Um, to try to make the budget for the school. Um, so it could be that there has to be another override vote. Um, but that would be my recommendation, because it's a little bit crazy to sit around. Trying to figure out whether we're going to keep the streetlights on or not. And whether we're going to be able to fund the um, we're contractually obligated to, for, on. Salaries as well. So that means we're laying off people in town. Um, that's the way it goes, so. We cut services.
But I think, I think.
And then at the last minute, we added it all back. And I don't want to go through all of that again.
Yeah, and I understand that, you know, we deal with the budget as well and you're rating all the information you've got you are and it's. The timing is awful. Um, the state really needs to do something about getting the timing over so we have at least know what our revenues are. Uh, we have no desire to uh, cause the towns pain. Um, you know, we're residents as well. Our. Our, our parents, our students are obviously residents as well. Um, the town is just as important as the schools. Um, so we're trying to work to.
I agree, but we need to work up.
I mean, we're, we're all bailing water from the boat. I get that, but I just, I just want to make sure that we're, we're. Doing the best use of all of our times and efforts.
No, I, I will bring this up. Uh, we were unaware that it would be on any of the April ballots. As far as we knew, um, it was going to go to all of the three towns, the town meetings first, and then to a ballot if. Um, it need be afterwards.
Yeah, I mean, that could still happen. We're, we can still. I- i- if, if it, if it failed on the April ballot. But somehow passed at a meeting, we could still put it on another special election. This just saves us the cost, this possibly saves us the cost of having a special election.
Thought that that would be the best.
Yeah, and and we, and we've been through two major um, overrides over the last, you know, fifteen years or so. In town. Um, and yeah, I I remember them being on the April ballot and then going to a town meeting. But again, for here, everything we we knew it was going to, we're meeting. So this definitely changes the timeframe.
So could we have um, somebody get in touch with the town administrator once we, to give us, we'd just like to know when they're going to start. Pushing forward with marketing efforts for lack of a better term, um, so that we know that. Where else to time everything out that we.
Yeah, I I will say that the administration did reach out to me today, Nancy. Hans from the administration reached out and wanted to have a call day by day. Triple booked, and so I didn't have a chance.
I'm aware of that. I was the devil.
Um, with information is uh, that we can have not just what the schools need, um, but also kind of incorporate what the towns need as well. As far as, you know, services um, that are, you know, if so, if we all have to cut. A whole lot more, what it is that everyone uh, knows will be kind of cut. If the whole message kind of goes out. Um, because, you know, it's not just the school. We know that.
I wouldn't make any cuts until after, something like Brad Morgan, until after I know whether or not the um, override passes.
I agree there.
Um, if the override passes, and so that means after town meeting. You know, if it doesn't pass at the ballot, well then it'll be voted again at town meeting. And if it doesn't pass there, then we can make it work as cut.
Yeah, gotta get through those two things, though I think the, the, the goal would be to do as much education as possible. In the weeks that we have, which is only five weeks for town meeting, four weeks before the elections, so.
Yeah, we pretty much kept the the two point six percent over everything. Pretty much.
With our, with the increases that we.
Right, and we have that amount to give to the schools. So, you know, paved roads go away. I guess that's something that we lose, paved roads. Um, we've lost that for the past three years, because we just can't afford. To put anything more than chapter ninety. So all the people that. Sit on Facebook saying, oh, the town doesn't do anything. Well, yes, we do. We educate our children. You know, that's what it comes down to, so.
But I will, I will reach out to the administration first thing tomorrow and and. Be a touch base with the F B and see what good information there. You know, just what, what the override number was.
Thank you.
Um, did we want to maybe set a time for if we need to to talk to the school committee again, or?
Well, so the, the, we've got two more order selection meetings before. The vote.
Were we going to do on April eleventh? We had talked at one point about doing an April eleventh town meeting to go over the warrant. And we could.
Budget, right, it was a budget.
The budget, well, the, which includes, we went over all the warrant items. Which includes the budget. And so, and that's before the vote. So it would be good for the communications committee to have a message to bring forward. If we have that meeting.
On April eleven.
On April eleven.
Yeah, and that way we, we can take all the questions from, from people at that turn.
Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you. So. Do you want to do? From, from the solar canopy, so are we, you guys okay with going right to there? So we can go to the newly added two point four.
This is Alan Giles. Alan is from Select Energy. He's been talking to the town about some canopies.
Hi, folks.
Yeah, I was, we, we, uh, we wanted to drop it into a. Uh, someone, if we had, uh, Hartley, if we could share. Share the um.
I have an open port.
Uh, which, uh, who's um. Who would like to be given the, the screen sharing, uh?
Let's put it in Teresa's. Who was not Teresa's chair?
Okay, she now uh, can uh, screen share.
No, it's just my computers. No, it's just.
All just for being late now. It seems that Tuesday is a very popular board meeting day.
Oh, I'm sure. So you did other presses there, haven't?
Yeah, one started at four, but I got bumped on the agenda, so kind of pushed into. But I could be very efficient and be at both ends of the state. It's, it's kind of struggling this time of year to get through process, because. I'll try to get to as many town meetings as I possibly can and get warrants done and things, but. No way we're getting a town meeting now. Can we find it, or?
Oh, yeah, it's just my computer. So you, you have to.
To open the powertrain?
So you have to sing the Jeopardy song while you're waiting for anything to come up.
And I did the spinning wheel, the spinning wheel of death.
That is this one right here, right?
Yeah, it was opening up on the screen, it was. They're saying, you're starting screen sharing. Let's see what comes up here. Why does that keep flickering? It's been doing, it's been doing that all meeting.
Yeah, it's been doing that for a little bit of time.
No, we need a new computer.
My apologies, I feel like I'm putting you on the spot with your PC.
Do you want me to boot up and get in?
I, I can probably start a little bit. Go ahead, give you. Um, um, Eric introduced me now in Giles. With an organization called Select Energy out of Hocken. Uh, and investments for about, there it is, two thousand years.
Oh, I thought.
Oh, no, it's working? I walked out of the room, it's going to start working.
And this, this is the presentation that I. Just Mr. Pligle a little while ago, we went over and after he suggested that. I come and meet with you folks and go through this and. Talk a little bit about. Um, the company, myself, uh, the opportunities that we're looking at. Um, this is pretty much how I usually do um. A proposal, I talk about select, I talk about the nonprofit organization called Power Hocken. That we um. Want the most recent R F P for to provide services to their members. Um, talk a little bit about solar and storage. And then, but then I was going to talk about some of the opportunities that we um, we looked at here in the town and um. Just slightly, I decided that some of them were not appropriate. And a couple of them were appropriate, so that's what I was here to talk about a little bit today. Um, and I also took into account that you knew that you already did sell the farm. And I also took into account that you knew that you already did solar farm, how to uh transfer station and how that all works, so I took that into account and looked at a lot of different opportunities there. It just keeps blowing in and blowing out. Can you use the arrow down key? There is a little bit about select. We're um, we're privately held company, a year and a half ago, we were acquired by a much larger company called Pattern Energy Group, talk about Dallas and in San Francisco. Pattern Energy is a multi-national, noble energy company that own large assets globally, mostly wind from hydro. Um, a short while ago, they looked at organizations like ours to um, bring into the fold to be able to provide service, solar services directly to um commercial in municipal municipalities. Um, a short while, there's an organization that started um, the state of Massachusetts and spun off as a nonprofit called Power Options. And Power Options is one of the first organizations to be a buying consortium for municipality. So they started with buying um uh, electricity and natural gas contracts for their clients. And about nine years, nine years ago, they um branched off into solar, because a lot of their members were uh, asking about solar installations and what was the best way to look forward. So under the national law, power options is allowed to do RFPs on behalf of their um, for their members. So they, every three years, they go out, known for electricity and for natural gas, but they also go for solar energy. Um, in, in the award, they um, we are based on the type of system, the size of the system, we're locked into how we price those systems. And the, in the way we present our proposals and prices to Power Options number. Um, and more importantly, they actually cap the profit margin on the projects. So Power Options kind of, as a member of Power Options, they're on your side of the table looking out, making sure that we're doing our job according to the RFP that we want. With that, with that being said. Go to the next one again. Yeah, this is a little bit more about Power Options. Um, but I think it's, I don't know exactly the mass um general law that it is, but one of it is, they come up twenty five, this term law twenty five two there. Um, instead of the town going out for an RFP for, for if they could leverage the RFP that was already awarded Power Options. Um. Go down, we've done, this is our third um, RFP award this year. And through the Power Options program, we've done close to ninety schools and municipalities, including a lot of your neighbors. A lot of the regional school systems, a lot of the um uh, county municipalities where V K N certified, so we're actually probably keep going through all those state universities, doing canopies, doing rooftops, doing stores. So we've been, um, on the private side, we have, uh, tops Harvard. Um, we've done a lot of boutique colleges like Stonewall College and uh, I'm working with South College in Auburndale right now, improvements. The way we do this is we actually, under the RFP, select actually own, implements and manages ensures the asset. We take the financial incentives associated with federal incentives and state incentives kind of buy down the cost of project. And then we know exactly how many kilowatt hours the system is going to produce over the term of the contract. And we take that and divide it into the kilowatts. So our focus is to provide you what we call Power Options Agreement, that uh when we go into the agreement, the kilowatts produced would be at a fixed rate. And that fixed rate would be for the term of the contract. So the idea is we start at one level, try to provide the savings in the first year, you know, as as there's increases in electricity costs moving forward, you're recognizing the benefit of that electric savings over that period of time. These are just some of the examples of some of the projects we've done, pretty much focused on what we call behind the engine solutions. We feel that renewable energy works best when it the energy goes directly to the building that it's supported, rather than being on a farm, creating a bill credit, which is actually dollars and then applying those dollars to a bill. So we, we started with rooftops, we've been, the last couple of years, we've moved put in a tremendous amount of canopies for organizations. And we do some small ground mounts, but usually those ground mounts are tied directly to a municipal organization like um a waste water treatment plant, like um, a a water tr- uh, water, the water department managing all the um the costs associated with the wells in the town. Um, a lot of times, it might be, like in the case of Stonewall College, we actually used a large section of area that was, nobody ever used, they actually was an old ball field that we found. And between the ground mount and the large parking lot, we did a full canopy, we actually got there. We're able to offset ninety five percent of Stonewall College's annual electric load. We do a lot of storage. Um, over the last couple of days, and there's a lot of financial incentives associated with um battery storage here in Massachusetts right now. Um. One of the um, primary goals for storage is that um the law says that if the electricity is out on the street from the utility, the solar system can't make any electricity, that's it's done off, whether the sun is out or not. Or if there's a battery in with the system, the solar, the, the system disconnects from the grid, from the street, it's like a generator, and the solar now provides electricity to the battery, and the battery provides electricity to the building. The other thing a battery can do is um, there's a a section on the bill. Kind of bill's kind of broken up into floor parks, one with customer charge. The other is a demand charge, then you have to charge for delivery of the electricity, then you have to supply it. That demand chart is um, the utility looks at the the bill over the course of the billing period, every half hour. And it determines what half hour during the course of the billing period you ask for the most electricity. And then it takes that amount and has a uh, agreed to price um, that unitile gets from the state. And it charges you, you see that charge on your bill, it's called the demand charge. It has nothing to do with the electricity that you use and pay for, it's just a a charge associated with making sure that there's electricity there. Well, a battery can be educated through software to know when that large request for electricity comes, and the battery turns on. Instead of getting electricity from the, from the uh, from Unitile, it gets it from the battery, so it drives that cost down over the course of the period of time. The other is plain resilience, if it comes, it goes out for a long period of time. Um, especially if it's connected with an existing generator at the site. The battery now supplies electricity to the building, and if the battery gets pretty low, because there's not a lot of sun, not a lot of the ability for the solar to fill the battery up, the battery asks for the generator to turn on and fill the battery up. So they cannot be running the battery, uh, the generator is not doing normally what it did over that period of time. And the building can stay online a little bit longer. That don't make sense? Okay, this suggests me, um, let's, some of the um, projects we've done over the last few years, um municipalities, we're actually just working with um we just won an award working with Honeywell. Who was that energy service company for the all Boston schools. And we're now going to do the roofs of all the Boston schools. Over the next three to four years. Worcester, Hocken, we did, I was right, believe we did uh, um the affordable housing project in Worcester, um Hocken and Hall, in the central mass, we've been up and it's made a lot of inroads up this way in the, with the regional school district here in central mass, region uh, middle sex, we have got their ethic. From that part way down south, up at Cape, from Cape Cod where I'm from. The, this kind of moving towards some of the opportunities, we looked at the D P W site, we looked at the library, we looked at the police station. Um, gee, where are you at? Wasn't pretty, pretty much.
It was a pretty great site for a while.
I looked at, at the, the D P W site, it was um, I looked at the roof because the roof is situated in such a way that it would make sense for solar. But a lot of times those buildings are, those steel buildings are only built, got the handle, the current loads associated with winds, snow, and then they're not really beat up to be able to handle the extra weight required for solar. So I skipped that, I, I looked at that building and I knew who the manufacturer was and I knew I could not get a structural engineer to say, Alan, we could put more up there. So I looked at the can, doing a canopy at the D P W. But everywhere I looked on the property, that canopy would pretty much interfere with traffic for trucks and cars that are moving around it, and so we moved away from that. But the library, I was amazed at the cost of the, the bill associated with running the library. Um, and the library.
Throw away, yeah.
And the library has a great, great parking lot situated in such a way that we could implement solar canopy there. And that, so that, um, the shot on the right hand side to the library, I looked at all the roof, seeing if I could do the roof, but if you can see all the depth and all of it really didn't lend itself too well from doing solar on the roof, so I went straight to the canopies. Um, and that, the canopy is kind of just, I had lots of options. But those two canopies, over those two sections, actually provide a hundred percent of the electric load.
Are they up to cover this for current parking spaces?
Yeah, they go right over the current parking spaces. That's, that's the um, that's a rule with the state of Massachusetts, that can only put canopies to receive the incentive over the existing parking or walkway, so they go right over the existing parking. And we don't use any parking spaces. Um, the photo on the, on the left shows the police station. And it's just that, I, that's what it kind of looks like, it's a police station to offset hundred percent of the electric load at the police station. I would redesign that system to be more of a rectangle that fits right over that parking area right there, not two separate ones, that's what we call a span parking. It's just nice big rectangle where the cars can go, drive right underneath and use the existing parking spaces. And again, that would be tied right to the meter at the police station. So those are the two best opportunities in the town um, that we could come up with. And then this slide here kind of shows what the financial analysis is after I do a design. We haven't actually physically had a site visited, it's scheduled for next week, I believe, to make sure that we're covering all the costs associated with it, but we've done enough of these to kind of know where, how much things are going to cost. But if you, if there's any way to just show the um, what's inside, it's okay.
I tried to get fancy and make it larger so I could see it and uh, got too fancy.
I believe this is the, yeah, this is the police station. So the size of the canopy is based in kilowatts, it's two hundred and twenty-two kilowatts of DC capacity. It's forecasting the first year to make um, one hundred and twelve percent of the electric bill. Of the kilowatts used for the, for the police station. And the reason I went to a hundred and ten percent is it, we have what's called the net metering law, and the net metering law says if you produce more electricity than you consume, bins a meter backwards and the, and the utility can give you a credit, and that credit's applied to the bill. Well, if I overproduce, then that credit can be used to offset that demand charge I was talking about, as well as the the custom charge, any of the charges that normally come. So the idea was we could get that Unitile bill to say zero. And then we would invoice you based on the kilowatts at the fixed amount on the contract, which is lower than what you're currently at with Unitile. And then on the right hand side, that forecast shares for twenty-five years of the contract. How much, how many kilowatts the system produces. And then we forecast that Unitile's going to increase its costs every year by two percent. Historically, over the last twenty years, and then closer to five percent last year, I think it was a hundred percent. But um, that's the idea. So we, we show what the forecasted of electric kilowatt rate would be from Unitile against our contract rate, which is fixed for that period of time. And that, that forecast of saving that the police um, would see on their Unitile.
Yeah, can I just explain something real quick that I, I, the first thing I noticed with this, it was this, we can't, you can't read this chart the same way we read the charts about the last time when we bought energy. Because that, those numbers were just for our purchase of the energy and didn't include any of the delivery. This cost includes both the purchase price of the energy, plus the delivery charge that we're getting from Unitile, so it's higher than that. We got fifteen cents, fifteen point seven cents, I think, a kilowatt hour, but that was just for us buying the energy from from the, 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 the third party supplier. We still have a delivery charge and other charges on top of that, which is why these numbers for units will look higher than.
When you, when you add the, the supply charge that is not the contract for supply with in Massachusetts, we're unregulating, you can buy supply from anybody, going for long-term contract. But the Unitile charge for delivering the electricity, that is what they call it a tariff, and they go to the um Department of Public Utilities and they say, this, here's all the line items and this is what we need. And the Department of Public Utilities approves it as a tariff, and for six months, that's the rate. So when you, I take all of those charges for the tariff and then add it to the supply charge of fifteen cents, you're actually paying twenty-seven cents a kilowatt hour for the whole kilowatt on the Unitile there. Our forecast for this, based on the um, the system and the incentives that come through, our contract will be at twenty-two cents out of the gate, and it would stay twenty-two cents for the next twenty-five years.
I have, I have, I have questions, I have two questions. Um, so this is the twenty-five year contract, what is the lifetime of the panels? Do they produce?
Twenty-five years.
And do they produce the same amount consistently over that lifetime?
That's a great question. The answer is no. And that's the, if you look at the production, you see it declines. It declines over time. So the warranty associated with the panel that, that it will, um, the degradation of the panel is a half of one percent. And there's a lot, there's a lot of history to that. And the panels that we use actually um, go through a process not only from a U well side or the physical nature of it, but it also goes through a financial audit. A financial audit looks at the company and the equipment and says, okay, this is a financially stable company, they can back their warranty, and they have the insurance associated to it. It's called a tier one status, and it's done by Goldman's that. And banks and lenders use that as a benchmark to be able to lend against projects like these. So we can, we only use for you all lay, uh, you all list the equipment in order to get a um, building permit from the electrical inspector. And second, we only use tier one equipment so that we can actually get funding associated with it.
Okay, so now we go to the second question that's related to the first. So we are reducing production over the lifetime, but we, but we're supposed to be covering a hundred percent of the building. What happens if we add um, EV charging stations?
So you're adding more capacity to. So you're adding more capacity. So that capacity would be come under the Unitel cost.
So, um, so would it be better to overbuild originally so that we're spinning that thingy backwards? So that?
Not as much as Unitel will allow me. I can't, I can't produce more than a hundred and ten percent on the day that I.
So if we want to add panels, what happens?
We can do that. So we would come back and we would look at it and do it first. It's a whole nother process with Unitel application process. It's another system we combine and add to it and then we amend this contract.
And, and on that amendment, are we locked in for an additional twenty-five years at that point? Does it add, I mean, are we looking at fifteen years if we add panels? Or are we looking at, say, a ten years? We decide, okay, we need more panels. Maybe it's five.
Um, my history, the history for me personally, as well as my company, is that the two separate contract, two separate system. And Unitel considers them two separate systems. So we have one under one contract and one under, and then amended to that contract. But this one is twenty-five and this one can be fifteen, ten, twenty, twenty-five. How the numbers are in, tied down.
And they weren't ten run for currently?
Um, yeah, well, one would be on the original contract and the other would be on a, a different schedule.
If the, if the original contract's twenty-five years, the amendment ten years later could be only for fifteen.
Right, but it doesn't have to end at the end of the year. Couldn't they start it at year five of the twenty, twenty-five year contract?
It's, it's, it's how we want to look at it. Think, do we want it all to end at the same time? Okay, that, the second, the addition we add on, that's how we amortize it.
And we can put the amendment to how many years we, we want to do it. We want them both to end at the same year, then we can do that.
Yeah, we just have, it would just be a matter of looking at the numbers and saying, what makes sense?
What, what a lot of our customers is coming back now since we've been doing this for over ten years now. And systems are fifty, fifty percent through the contract. Um, the equipment from ten years ago is half the size. The equipment we installed, we installed today is the same square footers. So we're installing two hundred and fifty watt panels ten years ago. We're installing five hundred watt panels now, right? So a lot of our customers now coming back to us and they're calling, we're calling it a refresh. They're saying, look, you wanted a contract for another ten years, but we've increased our electric load here drastically. We have room to be able to. So what we do is we call it a refresh. We actually take all the old stuff off and put brand-new stuff on, start a brand-new contract over again. Lots of options to do. I, I do things in phases, multiple contracts with dendrons. We can do refresh it. Lots of different things. This is kind of, this is the, um, the process we go through, um, because it's, it's just town, um, uh, opportunities. The contract has two components to it. One component is the power purchase agreement and the second is a site lease, which gives us the right to own and operate the asset on town property. And it's more than three years itself, twenty-five years. So that requires town meeting vote. So the goal here would be to spend the next, the rest of the year, um, getting through the approval process, getting input from the, the community, if it makes sense, um, uh, if it makes sense to move forward with this. Um, under the RFP process, we would go to a letter of, a non-binding letter of intent. That letter intends that both parties agree to work towards a solution in the contract. Um, and then we, under our RFP, we start spending money. The most important part is the longest lead item is with the utility. It could take six months. It could take eighteen months for them to approve, um, the, the, um, right to interconnect the asset to the building. So, um, we want to get that started right away. Requires a little bit of engineering application fee. The second part is the incentives with the state of Massachusetts. Usually those incentives only, you can only do the application after you receive the interconnection application from the utility company. And those incentives have a declining scale. The more solar comes into the Unitel area, the lower those incentives get. The lower the incentives get, the more money I have to have from my client in order to pay the system. So what we want to do is get that application into the state as fast as possible because they allow municipalities to do it before the interconnection applications. Whereas if the neighbor across the street, he would have to wait for Unitel before he could get it. So if we're upfront, we can lock in those incentives, no matter how long we know exactly what they're going to be, no matter how long it takes us for, for it to, it makes sense. So the idea is, you know, if, if we go forward and you're okay with this, give permission to the town manager to, um, enter into a letter of intent, we start moving forward. We go back to stakeholders in town, show them what we're trying to do, get some feedback. I provide the contract here for the town manager and councilor work through. And then we get to town meeting. I think next town meeting, December, I think it's going?
Yeah, we, we have.
Unless you have a special.
Yeah, we have a special. The next special would be in December.
Yeah. And then we'd be asking the town to give you permission to allow the, um, town manager to negotiate and enter like lease agreement.
Just a quick question on timeline. Is it town meeting vote, then letter of intent? Or is it letter of intent and then town meeting vote, etc.? And what happens if the town meeting vote is a no?
The non-binding letter of intent, so it.
Okay.
So we, we want to prepare, we want to get everything squared away upfront. We start spending money. Um, we don't spend a tremendous amount, but we want to spend enough to lock in those incentives and get the interconnection. But if we're going down the path, we get to December, everything's ready to go. And the town votes for you that, uh, for the site lease, then he could execute the site lease and the power purchase agreement.
And the class of the town is?
Yeah.
Ever. So the incentives go to the company? Yes, because the town does not own the panel.
Right.
And at the end of the line, correct?
Great question. I usually bring it up. Um, in the contract, we are responsible for dismantling at our cost, well, baked into it.
So even though they've used those panels, because they've curated site lease, but you're still using them. Uh, you come in, you dismantle. And what happens to the?
Panels get recycled. A very large business right now. I can't tell you how many that. I think everyone's at the table enough to remember the long, the long-distance phone calls we used to get on long-distance services. Right now, because I've been in the business for over twenty years, I'm getting all the recyclers calling me. Alan, you get the old projects. You know, because they're paying, they're actually physically, just like computers right now, it's the same. But they're actually stripping the aluminum off, stripping glass away, recycling it till it gets, going back in to make new wafers, new panels, glass and get recycled. And wires, yeah, recycled.
Compared to what they get for the recycling, is there any toxic, anything not recyclable from them at the end of the project?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, there is. Just like in a computer, there's, there's toxic things in there that, that recycling companies that.
Ten, twenty, fifty percent of?
Oh, I mean, far less than ten percent.
Okay.
I wish they were gold, like in this computer, there's gold in the air.
Is it possible at the end of the, at the end of the, um, agreement, for the town to say, we don't want you to dismantle it, we'll keep these old panels and we'll just?
Run until they're done?
For them to go back.
Ten, twenty-five years, production drops off the cliff. Right. And now these are true canopies. It might be producing some electricity, but they provide a better benefit for parking underneath. All right. When somebody comes out and it's not, they're not, their car's not getting rained on or snowed on or, and in the summertime, it's not a hundred and fifty degrees inside your car because it's parking.
Yeah, I think the police wouldn't like it if a canopy was done for twenty-five years, it's a little more.
I'm, I'm actually doing a lot of work with public safety and police buildings right now because one, one fire, one police chief told me that he's spending a tremendous amount of money on paint because their cars are up baking in this bomb all summer long. And the, the paint on the cars is deteriorating much faster than the life of the car. And people don't like ugly-looking police cars, I remember. The other thing is that in the summertime, they idle the cars to keep them cool. And in the wintertime, they idle the cars to keep them warm. So he believes that by parking these things under the canopy is going to spend the life of the car and reduce the operating cost.
And well, then now then, all the cruisers, all the new cruisers are hybrid. Uh, so it's not going to be long before we're going to be required to have electric charging at the police station, anyway.
What's nice about the canopy is that you don't have to do a separate, um, EV installation. You just put the EV charger right on the canopy and you run all the wires through the canopy. And what we usually, what we do is a standard practice is we run an extra conduit from the canopy to the building so that it's EV charger ready. We don't have to go and re-dig up and re-trench just around the conduit, put a new wire in. That's already done upfront so that EV ready. Power options as EV charging, they've gone through the RFP process for EV charging companies. So if we wanted to bring that, we can bring them in as part of the project, get any, punch it. The same type of project as a member. The company bears all the costs and you have fixed costs associated with it. But what, what we're looking for right now is to, if, if it makes, if you think it makes sense, with the town manager knowing, I can craft up a, a letter of intent, get it over to him. He can sign that and we can kick things off and start the process. Um, we could go and try and be ready for the next town meeting.
Well, and the, the fall town meeting, the last couple of years spent in December.
But I'm just thinking of this past year. What happens if we stop? Is there a time limit on that letter of intent?
It's, it's good for all year and we can.
For a whole year because of what happened this year with our, well, we never had a fall town meeting because we never got it for, we tried twice.
Well, we, we have a, there is a discussion to change, to put that on, that change on the bylaw.
Yeah, that's even then.
Even then, but.
That happens to us more often than not because the utility, if, if it's in a very congested area, they do what's called an study. And that study can take eighteen months before they make a decision on what needs to be upgraded and how much the cost of that upgrade is going to be. So the letter, so we can, if, if it does get expanded, we just amend the letter of intent and redit, and redate it.
If, if an upgrade is necessary to bear cost of that?
Upgrade to?
The electrical system. Right.
So if, this, this happens all the time. In, in the contract, I, in the LOI, I will forecast what the power purchase agreement rate is going to be and what the incentive rate is going to be. Then we're going to drive through that. But there are, this wildcard, like the utilities are wildcard. I have to do the application, wait for the application approval, and then they tell me how much I need to spend to upgrade their system. So I then make an adjustment on the power purchase rate. But in the contract, it says, we have, I call it a call, there's a, there's the base rate and not through the C grade. So somewhere in that delta, especially with a canopy, I don't know what's on the ground. There could be some old bathtubs under there. We don't know about. But I, that's what happens to me at Cape Cod.
That sounds like too specific an example.
But it happens to me at Cape Cod Community College. The, the college was built in the sixties and the general contractor got the contract to build all the community colleges in the whole state. And he went there, he decided to build, dig a big hole and run his, all hit his junk. He buried it in that hole and covered it over. And then we came back sixty years later and said, we're going to put a solar farm here. And we started digging. The next thing you know, we got copper plate coming out and an old bathtub coming out. All kinds of steel in the ground, wood, and then we just stopped and we paved it over and we did these big blocks of concrete and put the, put the solar in the blocks of concrete instead of, uh, in terms of more fossilized. So are, what, are you looking for?
We're looking for a vote now to authorize the town administrator Jenner into a non-binding letter of intent. With SLOAC to put the canopies on the police station, to pursue the, the, the necessary agreements with Unitel, to put the canopies at the police station, the, the, you know, the, the library.
With the intent to go forward at?
Fall town meeting.
Well, then the town.
I make a motion that we direct the town administrator to, um, pursue a non-
Bonding.
Non-binding, uh, letter of intent, uh, with, what's the word? BDM?
Edit.
A PDM.
So that's select BDMs make. BDM means, I didn't, I didn't tell it that because it virtually went to him for discussion purposes. Select BDM is, I'm a business development manager.
Oh, okay.
And it should say town gile business development.
All right, I'll do that then.
We're still chatting.
I was just trying to wrap it up in a minute.
Um, any other discussion, press, discussion?
Did I change it to still have energy or?
Like. We're directing the TV.
Thanks.
Well, all those in there?
Hi.
Hi. We'll post so we can direct the TA. Thank you very, thank you very much. This is great.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. I really. Yes, I appreciate it and I'm sure that we'll be chatting again at some point. Yeah, it's great.
All right. I'll get that.
And is that?
I'll get that turned around.
And I put a copy on the one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Still good.
Happy night, folks.
Thank you. Um, four point six, discussion and vote on bus routes to, um, submit to MART. Um, I first want to thank Veronica for doing all of this work on this because I know that it was, well.
It was Emily McCaffrey, Beth Stansfield, and Karen.
There you go. So it was a mutual effort, collaborative effort. Um, so the bus routes that we're seeing, that came up with was, I mean, we discussed with the council on aging and?
Not exactly. Not with the council on aging. We did not discuss with them. It was the transportation task.
Gotcha, open.
Um, and it was where do we need, um, bus service? And well, first we have to be accepted by MART and we were accepted.
Yeah.
So then it was, um, they want, when do we think it would be used? And it's not for council on aging. It's for the general population in the town of Townsend. Council on aging have now two mini buses that are run through LRTA. This is for the general public in Townsend who cannot use the bus service that the council on aging provides. Anybody who's a senior citizen, anybody in town can use, um, the MART service. It's for everybody. The bus service through the senior center is selected.
So I, I stand corrected, but what I'm saying is you, you have talked with other individuals to come up with the bus routes is what I'm trying to get at. And the bus routes that you're proposing here are four separate routes or?
Uh, there are two sets of routes, four and. Uh, there are two sets of routes, four and each. Um, it's weekday and weekend. We thought that the need was to get people to the Fitchburg um intermodal, modal center. Where they could pick up buses to wherever and leave the trains to Boston. So we targeted trains to Boston, um, we also looked at the bus schedule. Which runs variably depending on whether you're going to the Mount or to La Minster or to Worcester or wherever you want to go. So anyway, so we thought that we would do two morning routes from Townsend to Fitchburg, one leaving at five fifty AM targeting the six thirty three AM train to Boston. One leaving at seven fifty targeting the eight thirty three AM train to Fitchburg. And then two routes back in the evening, Fitchburg to Townsend. So one leaving Fitchburg Intermodal Center at six fifteen PM and one leaving the Intermodal Center at eight fifteen PM. And um, so that way we could pick up anybody that was coming in on the four nineteen. Wow, trains number four nineteen and four twenty one, which is pretty much the four and the five of bus buses, oh, trains out of Boston and then the two later ones right after them. So that's weekday. Because we figured people were trying to get to school or they were trying to get the job or they were trying to get to medical appointments or whatever. The weekends, we did a little bit differently because um we figured that uh, people would um, it it's more recreational at that point. And these are going to be mini buses or buses, probably fourteen passenger vans with bike racks on the back. Is what we had in mind. Um, so one would leave Townsend at nine fifteen heading to the Fitchburg Intermodal Center targeting the ten oh eight AM and later trains and buses. And then um and then there would be one that leaves Fitchburg at nine fifteen coming to Townsend. So that if people wanted to come here to ride the rail trail or hike or shop or do whatever, you know, is available to do in Townsend. And then same thing in the evening, one going towards Fitchburg leaving Townsend at five fifteen and one coming from Fitchburg to Townsend. So that was um what we did. The um origination is the parking rod area behind Town Hall, which for right now would be just the Town Hall parking. Um, eventually a parking area down along Jet Street um in this field, right back here. And the destination is the Intermodal Center. Or vice versa, from the inner Fitchburg Intermodal back here. And the mail is from Bruno Fisher, who's the director of March, telling us what we needed to do for the next step. Um, because they want the routes that we want. So it's four runs a day, basically.
Right.
Um, and and then, yes, and then they will uh provide us with an estimate of what it will cost the town. So um, and go ahead.
So do we need to do, there's really no action except for to
Need to go?
A a vote to agree on the.
Um, I'm going to go to Bruno. The next step, essentially the Townsend Board of Selectmen needs to forward a letter to Mark indicated, indicating the services being requested. Mark will then provide you with the estimated total cost of the services as well as the estimated portion of the cost to be assessed to town. And and then upon approval of the cost of the service by the Townsend Board of Selectmen, they would contact, so once we approve the cost of the service, so it's here's the service we want, they give us an estimate. We approve, if it's what, you know, we can afford it. Um, we approve the service and then they contact the Board of Selectmen to plan the services, identify a target date to begin the services and set up meetings, they have a marketing coordinator who will market the routes.
You have a question?
Yeah, a couple of things. The timing from to get the early morning bus into Boston, how did you um determine how much time that you needed, like in case you get stuck behind school buses and whatever? What, what time lapse do you have between what time you had the bus landing and what time the uh train leaves?
We figured it would be thirty minutes um to get from here to Fitchburg, to the Intermodal Center, which is pretty generous, actually. And uh, and then to leave a little bit of time, so if you leave at five fifty, you get in at six twenty.
And the train leaves?
Six thirty three. So that's how we figured.
Yeah, well, that's more time than you would have in Boston because you get off the train and run to, run to the commuter rail.
That's how we figured it, if Mark can work with us if they think it's.
I think it might be a little late, but maybe not.
Um, we met with Bruno uh after approval and um, what we didn't know is, was it a dedicated bus that went from Townsend, Fitchburg to Townsend, back to Fitchburg? These buses can come from anywhere, the way they do their scheduling, one bus might come from Devens, it's done a run to Devens. One bus could come from Gardner, depending on, so the routes are you know, it's a type of bus and they could do the routing.
They plug the routes in their computer and like figure where the closest to, the closest unidentified bus.
So it's not a down, back, down, you know, he said, figure out what times you want to go. Because we had originally done it down, back, down, yeah, kind of like that and then.
And then the other, uh, it's a suggestion, um because this, I I do hope that, and I do see that it is going to be used, and I do hope it is something that it is used. But I do see it as something like you said, for older people to come in, park the cars, uh, get on the bus and go down and take a, um, train into Boston. Um, I would prefer that it be at the overflow parking lot instead of um, having parking lots take, you know, parking spaces taken up um by a more senior citizen.
Okay, so, um, we, we discussed that, the lighting isn't good there, it's dark. Um, it's off the beaten path. Um, may or may not be a good thing, so further in the meeting, I was going to talk about the community one stop. So we um put in a grant application to upgrade the area down here and the Jeff Street parking lot. And to put a sidewalk down along Jeff Street to come over to here, so that you could park there or you could park down here. But it costs money to do that. Um, and and so the the hope is to eventually have a decent parking area that's well lit and easily navigable on foot, especially in snow. Um, but for now, this is where it would be.
Well, I know that with a couple of studies that I've worked on, um, transportation has always been at the top of that list. Transportation issues, there are thousands of people getting that, that, and it's it's not the senior population, it's everybody. Um, being able to, uh, having the ability to get from Townsend to the Intermodal, I think is huge and not have to, to get a ride. Having said that, um, I, I agree fully with this, that this is providing us an opportunity to provide a a great service that we need here and then we can reevaluate the the need or the, you know, the time to all of that. Um, but I personally think that this needs to be moved. I, I personally, I'll say that, you know, for the patients that I work with, having transportation here in town is is huge to get them to inform doctors of when um, that they don't have, so um, I would like to um move forward with sending this route out, I think the route right now is, is something that we can work with. Um, and if we need to make any changes, we have the ability to do that, correct?
Oh, I'm sure we do.
Can I get a, add one more question before we move forward back? Do, uh, you also consider the library because there's so much parking space there and it is well lit and it's by the police station?
Um, that's another option. But we thought the center of town would be better. Um, but that is another option if we want to change it for them.
But I think that the, the, the original goal was to put it um on this side of one nineteen to prevent, to, to, just to make it a quicker shot to to Fitchburg, so when the minute you get up past one nineteen, you're talking about navigating intersections and.
Another school, another.
And the turkey.
Uh, I, I do think that if there, if we can get the, the um uh, the improvements to the lower, to the lower um field down there. It's just much easier to get in and out to Fitchburg from down there than to try to do it from other.
Cause I do see days that without that bus, we felt very run out of parking there, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that, that, the, the goal is to have that be a very, very limited timeframe, we're talking about using the back parking lot here. And to try to get the, you know, to pursue any kind of green opportunities we have, if that.
I'll tell you what, we can talk about for now, if you would just hold back for a minute. I can tell you what we put in.
We can probably have a vote first on that.
So he says the board is, uh, we need to vote. Um, and forward a letter to Mark indicating the services being resolved.
I'll make a note in that we send the information as we discussed to Mark for all the dates and times of those requests.
In order to get them processed.
Supposed to be painful. All those, well, any further discussion? Uh, any further discussions, no? Um, all those in favor? And thank you Veronica and Karen and Emily. And Beth.
That's our transportation for town.
Excellent job and I appreciate that and I know that a lot of townspeople would appreciate that as well. Four point eight, we can do real quick, I had asked the town administrator um, just to put um the budgets, the, the budget summit on for A, a quick decrease, I thought it was a very good use of everyone's time, we kind of stayed as close to the time schedule as we possibly could. Um, but there were a couple of changes and I wanted the town administrator to kind of go over that real quick.
Yeah, so we, we had talked about um making a few changes to um the um the, the budget when we were in the, the second two Saturday to go. Um, one of the main ones that we, uh, that we discussed was uh, setting aside some additional funding for uh snow and ice. So there is some additional funding that has been put towards the snow and ice budget in effort to make that closer to a real snow and ice budget than we've had in the past, um, although we're not talking about all of our free cap. Um, let's see. Um, there had been some requests to add in some uh, uh, some separate training lines for various departments and so we went through and made the changes, I, I believe I, I made the changes to the training lines where we discussed them.
So what did you do on snow and ice budget? Oh, this is a three nine version.
Yeah, I apologize, it should not say three nine, that's the latest version, but if you look, if you look at the, at the, down at the uh.
So you added twenty five thousand.
Yes, we added twenty five thousand for the snow and ice budget. Um, in addition, I, I apologize for going back and forth, also on the, um uh, the board and select, board and select, but if you look at the numbers, it's line number twenty. So that's on the first, very first page. The line number twenty, we set aside the twenty five thousand dollars for the March parking ride cost.
Okay, well, we, can we adjust that if maybe, or we're just going to go with that?
I mean, I, I put in twenty five thousand dollars, we will, hopefully will know before the budget needs to be defined.
Because our paper, our napkin was forty K, but we, um, Townsend uh is allocated by the state about sixteen K, we had BTA money.
They take out from our, from our cherry sheet, they take out fifteen thousand dollars, we go towards.
Um, and so March has notified the DOI, but we're going to be using them.
So it will be taken down.
So it will be, um, no, we won't.
Be allocated to Mark.
It'll be allocated to Mark and they will put it towards our estimate for the parking lot cost.
So that was a, that's kind of a placeholder, the twenty five, there was, so I do have twenty five thousand dollars to do that.
And I, can I also say that our intent is to run it free for the first year to see what the ridership is? Um, because we could cover that twenty five K with some, you know, a dollar a ride charge or whatever, you know, if we will reach more. Our only five.
Uh, let's see, I'm just, I apologize, I'll give you a line one minute.
Well, we, we trued up some of the numbers for uh healthcare. Um, so that, that, you know, that, that is a reflection of two then. Um, the first is um the additional yeah, proposed items in the town budget that, that would in, would be staffed, that would be eligible for healthcare. But also, uh, it reflects the um water department increase in staffing for folks that are eligible for healthcare. That's offset by a, a funding from the water department enterprise that goes directly into the town's revenue.
Is that reflected on the three hundred and eighty? The enterprise um indirect charges for three eighty six is up in the amount?
That's the new amount, yes. So that recap sheet includes, I think, includes the, that we, um we had, uh, uh, unfortunately it appears that over the last year there hasn't been a true up of the, of the water department recap uh, or cost associated cost sharing with the town. So Melissa and I um sat down with Dave um, and kind of went through the worksheet and revalued all of the items, some of them had, had just been given your, your percentage increases opposed to truing up the actual numbers. So the number we came up with uh, last year in, in FY uh, uh, twenty three, this year, it was their, their contribution to the town budget was two hundred and seventy two thousand. And we're next year going up over a hundred thousand. Um, the bulk of that is the four new in, uh, employees that are getting healthcare, the two on family healthcare and two. That of the hundred and fifteen thousand, that's fifty five thousand, no, that's sixty thousand of it is just their health, increased health care cost.
I, I have a question about the pay gap, um, the pay access to, um transfer.
Yeah.
Does this reflect four quarters or three quarters?
That, that number is a placeholder because we don't have the numbers yet for FY twenty. We, we had, but at the time I originally made this budget, we didn't have even three quarters worth of money. So this is the same number that was in last year's budget.
Okay.
When I get the, when I get the numbers for the third, for the, the third quarter, this will reflect three quarters worth of money from FY twenty three, the actual numbers.
So and is the quarter that wasn't transferred last year being, that was part of the special town meeting warrant? Is that being um transferred in a special town meeting warrant?
It's gonna, it's gonna be on the special town meeting warrant in.
In.
In May.
In May, okay. All right, so we are anticipating only three quarters being transferred at the annual town meeting.
Correct, and that number is not going to do anything to the town's revenue because it's on both sides, it's going to be the same.
The makeup one in the special. The makeup one in the special and then three quarters in.
One, we do fourth quarter.
But we don't know the actuals. We don't get the actual, like.
Until after.
Until after town meeting. Because the fourth quarter is done. The fourth quarter for F Y twenty three, we won't, we won't get that money until sometime in July.
So we should think about rewarding some tickets. That's all.
Wait.
Okay.
Anyway, so that, that number is a placeholder. The other number that's a placeholder is the snow and ice in the, in the recap. Um, that was the, that's the deficit as of the fourteenth. Which is the last time I have the, the deficit for. Unfortunately, as, as everyone knows, that was the day before the, the last winter storm. On the fifteenth. So it's going to be larger than that. Yes, yeah. Um. So it's gonna be larger than that number. Um. But, but those two are the placeholders for the, the, the revenue. Um. My apologies, I just feel a little. Um.
Okay, so I see underscores at three eighty seven, seven hundred and seventy one is what we um, increased by. And so when you subtract that from the one point two mil, that's where we get the eight point one, whatever it is.
I'm sorry.
Uh, never mind. I'm just talking.
Just talking.
Yeah, it's one point two, the, 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 what they assess us.
Yeah. Although I, you know, I, I have both those numbers and I do, I apologize. I just don't have the exact number of the override.
That's.
But like I said, it's eight hundred and.
Thirty, you're about to say.
Yeah.
So this one four seven that we talked about health insurance, but that will come back to us because we said they were water department.
Which one, which uh, form are you looking at?
So the health insurance.
What's the line number?
Uh, so.
These line numbers are great. Yeah, so that, that. Yes, if that line has increased because of two things. The four health and water department employees, which are shown in the recap as revenue, put, as that three hundred uh, the three hundred and eighty six thousand dollars from the water department. Their, that help, their portion of the healthcare is included in that revenue.
Okay.
So a big chunk of that, of that increase, we're gonna get paid back for.
Can I say something about the housing budget?
Um, can I just, the, the one other thing just to note is the three hundred and thirty one thousand for general insurance is still a placeholder. That is the amount we are paying for insurance this year. But we are out to bid, we, we requested three quotes from three different entities on insurance. And my hope is that we're in a, a, a number equal to that or possibly better than that. Uh, um, Maya is a very, is approaching this very aggressively. I think they really wanna get up in their general insurance as well as their health insurance team. So I'm hopeful that they're gonna come in with a much better number than the three thirty one that we had last year.
And the hope too much because they're, can be much higher than what we expected last.
Maya did?
Maya, no, it wasn't.
No, it was, we didn't get this from anybody.
The one, that's what I'm talking about.
And that one came in.
That was. Well, that was, that was what we went with, right?
Yeah, it, it was, we didn't get any other bits.
Yeah, that was the one that was the, was a twenty thousand dollar increase over what we expected. Yeah, so. Again, I, there's not, so that, that's a, that's a soft number right now, but it will be a hard number before the, before the town meeting. Um, I'm sorry, you want, you wanted to go back and talk about?
I wanted to talk about housing.
Yes, the, the ten hours of housing.
Um, yeah, the housing authority number, which. Um. It's only three percent, one, four percent increase. That's why the four five oh five under housing costs that was only raised three percent rather than four. It's probably because of an old uh, formula that was kept in the, from last time and want updated.
I'll double check that.
So that, yeah, just double check that. Those two numbers should be the same. Because the thought was to have the same number of hours.
So the things that are in here that haven't been corrected are the three supervisors that need to be the same. I said, that's all I listed, but it shouldn't take very long. Um, and I'm still, um, uh, anything out of the office, so I haven't had a chance to sit down and talk with her. Um, about her and her, uh, yes, the deputy director. So I just make sure we're calculating that exactly.
And the big bump, forty four percent in the highway department. That's because we are gonna try to find the money for our pavement.
Yeah, that includes the two hundred and ten thousand dollars in, in paving. Which we're gonna try to, 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 to keep in.
Three, the rest of it.
Yeah. If, 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 if we are forced into a situation where we have to make up funds without firing people.
That's what we're gonna do.
That, that, that's one of the locations where we have the option of, of, of cutting some money without eliminating services.
What happened to line five seventy five? No, it's. Uh, what number is this here? It's five seventy eight. Look button there. How come? Five seventy eight on that.
Yeah, that, that's the four thousand dollar statement, right?
Yeah. That should be, you know, unless it's a charge. Five six thousand.
Alright, I agree. So the one thing that I did wanna point out, it's something I'm gonna sit down and talk to the board of health about is, um, we're, uh, line number five sixty three, which is the solid waste, the curbside pickup for trash. So the, the, I, I, I think everybody in town knows that there was a, an, a, a prochnap override to support, you know, um, weekly trash and recycling pickup. That override was for six hundred thousand dollars. So the cost now is at seven fifty five. So we, we, you know, I, we absorbed that into the, into the budget for this year. But I do know that we're coming up upon the time when it's gonna be, they're gonna start reevaluating the the trash contract. So I, you know, I'm gonna sit down with the, with the board of health and let them know that, you know, we're, you know, that, that's where we're reaching the end, the, the limit as to which the, the general fund can absorb the trash costs without another override.
The current con- contract ends next year?
Oh yeah, I think we have one more full year after this.
I think this budget is the last year of this.
Yeah, it's seven fifty five. I think it's the last year of that contract. So they're gonna be renegotiating, uh, you know, I, I, so I'll, I'll reach out to them and have a conversation with the chair. You know, and, and, you know, I, I don't wanna, I know that we, you know, it's important to the townspeople to have trash. It's been made very clear. I just wanna make everybody aware that, that, you know, trash costs are increasing and that the line that was voted on to, to support it, you know, was just six hundred thousand. Um. But obviously we absorbed it into this, to this, the, the twenty, the twenty thou- twenty two thousand dollar increase was absorbed in this budget.
Okay, I'd like to move on. We just wanted to touch upon different things.
And I, obviously, if there's any, if there's any members of the board, if someone has any questions about any line, please let me know.
Is this dynamic or is it pretty static at this point?
Um.
In other words, is this the budget that we should look at or are you, you know, if it's changing on a daily basis, whatever it was?
It is not changing.
I'd like to know where the most reason is living.
Yes, that, that, this is, this is, it is not changing on a daily basis. No, we, this is, this is, you know, relatively speaking, the budget. However, we have had conversations about some changes in staffing that may be happening. And those consolidations are not in this budget. If, if, if those changes in staff becomes certainties, but i- i- in a timely fashion, I would readjust this budget. I will know. The changes that we've talked about are a result in a reduction in, in, you know, in those costs. So if, you know, they're not gonna increase the budget at all. They would provide, uh, you know.
Well, I'll go through this and compare to my notes.
Yeah, I, I, so I apologize. Thank you. That, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for, for giving us the time to just take, take off.
Um, four point nine, discussion of Townsend Historical Society request for painted crosswalks. Um, we received a letter from, um, program coordinator Claire Palpe for the Townsend Historical Society. Um, this is in regards to, well, let me just read it. Uh, dear selectman, the Townsend Historical Society has long been an advocate of educating the citizens of town. To this end, every springtime, the society hosts the third graders of Spalding Memorial School. The spring will end a three-year hiatus due to COVID restrictions. Our program includes the students crossing South Street to gain access to the Gris Mill. To this realization, I request a painted crosswalk from the driveway at the Poop Ridge across South Street directly to the Gris Mill door. Safety is a major concern. The students will never be unchaperoned, but the danger potential is ever present. For our last school program three years ago, a crosswalk was painted, but unfortunately it was it was placed in the intersection of South and Main Streets, which rendered it useless for the children. I thank you for your attention to this matter. Um.
With Mr.
Go ahead.
Uh, so, um, I, I looked at this request. Um, and, you know, based on, you know, the conversations that we've had with e- engineers when we were looking at the, the painted uh, uh, bike lanes and, and, um, in that area. And quite, quite frankly, my experience with, this is way too close to the intersection of South and Main to put a crosswalk. It, it actually makes it a, a much more dangerous for folks crossing there. The children need to go down to Main Street, cross that Main Street, then come back across the bridge. Um. That, that's just, I, you know, the, 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 this would, this would have the potential, you have people making that turn on the South Street. They would be immediately confronted by a crosswalk with potential to have children in it, right? If they make that turn, it's too close to the intersection. It could back up traffic back out into South Street if people are crossing. Um, and, and if there's any traffic, you could have people potentially crossing in the middle of park or you stop vehicles that are stopped at the light. Um. I, I don't see how, I don't see how there's a way to make this safe. And I know there's been conversations about it before.
I added to talking to the chair points this morning after reading this letter where we had, um, asked about that when we were doing the work that Eric was talking about for the grant. And, um, Hiddleston and Associates are playing wagon. So the letter that they have there where Phil, Phil ride out except, requested exactly this. Um. And, uh, it's too close to the intersection if, um, they don't, uh, recommend striking crosswalks at locations where there aren't existing sidewalks or ADA accessible ramps. Additionally, there can be disadvantages to striding two crossings so close to each other, particularly if you were not to adjust the stock line. You would also, also need to consider updates to the traffic, traffic signal, including restricting right on red turns from South Street to Main Street and potentially adjusting the signal timing to a countback or the setback stock line. Um. Thinking long-term of betrayal is to utilize the main crossing closest to the intersection. I think both focusing improvements on that crossing and providing a safe walkway for the Gris Mill and for the Poop Ridge will have the greatest benefit. Um, so that's the deal.
So I, I also did a little research besides, yes, and I thank you for putting those on that, uh, resource initiative point for that. I looked at the, uh, municipal resource guide for walkability. Um, there's, um, several concerns I have. Number one is yours. Um, it specifically states in here that crosswalks, um, should not be placed um, so close together. They're talking, they're, they're, at an intersection is, is the proper place to put them, but you can do, um, I forget what they call it, mid-block crosswalk or whatever. Um, but they, they cannot be, or they should not be two hundred to three hundred. You know, in, in that range in where this crosswalk is, would be within that range.
Yeah, easily.
Yeah, yeah, um, for that. That's number one. Number two is I'm, I, I, I hate to, to boil it down to cost, but the, the cost for uh, one event for children to cross the street. Um, you know, I just can't see the, the pros and the cons of it to be able to, to pay to get that strike uh, just for a one event for, for the children. Um, there is, um, you know, the ability, I happen to live right there, so being, having, you know, I crossed that street.
You watch all the.
You know, uh, um, and yes, it is a hazardous. I agree with it. Uh, but if there are children on there and children are crossing the street, you know, having somebody go out on the street and make sure that the traffic is stopped while the children go out there is probably the only way. Or the safer rate is to go out to the crosswalk and come back down.
Yeah.
That, that is.
I, I will say that we put in for a mass trail grant to build that sidewalk from the Harbor Church to across the South Street light to make that crosswalk, um, uh, ADA compatible and to re-strike it. What we didn't put into for was a sidewalk down on either side of South Street to the Poop Ridge and the Gris Mill. That's something that we could look at, um, complete streets. I mean, I don't know who's gonna do the grant writing uh, in the next year or two, but, um, we don't have a grant writer anymore. And I, I would really suggest that we put a grant writing committee together if we're not gonna have a grant writer. Cause we don't have the, uh, the staffing capacity to do everything that would be wonderful to have.
So again, I wanna keep this right on the, um, the agenda items. So, uh, your thoughts on the crosswalk?
Yeah, I, I read through and I saw, I saw the photos and faced the burden, um. I un- I understand what they're trying to achieve, but I don't think it's increasing the safety for, for the children, um. In that one particular event, but even more so, I think it's putting other people that, uh, use it are thinking they're saying, um.
Illusion.
At, at, at additional, additional time thinking, oh, wow, it's safe to go.
Crosswalk, yeah.
It's a crosswalk, uh, when there, there's not teachers and supervisors who are not thinking the same and it's not a safe condition. So.
Um. Is, is, are there sidewalks on the side of the bridge?
One side.
Exactly.
Okay. And the other side is like?
Nothing.
Nothing, yeah.
It kinda ends at the bridge, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's the.
Well, the sidewalk goes past the bridge to, to the opponent house.
Yeah. Um, but not the other direction.
Correct. So actually where they cross is they cross more from where the sidewalk isn't on one side to the sidewalk. So they cross right around, right actually at that corner. Um, which is dangerous. It is twenty months.
Not the main street sidewalk, right? Doesn't it have a big block at the end?
Yeah.
Yeah, very, very, yeah, sidewalk.
So I thank the, um, Historical Society for, for their request. And I think we're gonna, it sounds like we're not gonna take any action on this point.
But I do think it's something that should be looked at for, um, this.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's something we can look at, yes, for future grants, but also when we're looking to try to tie all the historic, um.
A little together.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm thinking if that's something that they wanna do, I'd love to see where, going from one to the other, that would be.
Yeah.
The next historic metal. As opposed to painted crosswalks, that would be, would be period. Um, okay, so work session, five final artwork projects, um. We did look at, um, there are three potential artwork projects that we did briefly talk about, um, that was, um, Um, that was, um, the ADA compliance for the, uh, town playground that's, um, what is that called? Kids' Country, Kids' Country. Um, we also talked about, um, assessment and/or repair maintenance needs for town buildings. And to allocate ten thousand dollars for the bandstand repairs and improvements. Um, we did, uh, Sabrina, thank you, checked with, um, Jennifer, our, uh, our consultant in regards to our ARPA funding, and all three would be eligible under ARPA. Um, so at this point, all three projects, um, would be eligible for the funding in that we would need, uh, a vote from the select board to, um, approve the projects in amounts. So, um, going by the policy that, that we had all agreed upon, um, they would need, we would need to, um, put in an ARPA project request form, and it's a request slash reallocation form.
But, uh, we need to identify what project we're taking the funds from.
Correct.
So we have to give it back and reallocate.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any, we don't have any, uh, unallocated bucket.
Do we have an estimate on the ADA compliance? I would want to know that. Um.
Well, the, what, what came in was an estimate, estimate where it said that the, um, to, to get it fixed was a hundred thousand. And if it was ADA compliant, it would be more than that. That's the only.
So we're looking at a good deal on that. I, I would want to look at grant funding for that before we, um, unless you have a, do you have an ARPA project in mind for that?
My, my, my opinion on that would be, one of the benefits of us wrapping up our open space plan, which we should be wrapped up relatively soon and filing with the state is that we will be eligible for park grants. We don't do playground grants, basically, which is where you get the funding for, for playgrounds. The reality is, in Townsend, we only have one. And so, you know, Fezzin Field and, uh, and kind of that, 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 that playground is the town's only kind of recreation space that the town owned.
Well, no, there's meeting on Park, that's like a hundred eighty thousand acres.
Well, that's more passive recreation than active recreation, right?
It would be nice to have an ADA trail.
Sure.
Um, you know, and that land was purchased with a park grant. So, anyway.
Anyway, it's, it's one of the few spaces, I apologize. So I think since we've gone for years not applying for park grants because we didn't have an open space plan, the minute we get it approved, we should turn around and say, you know, we want to line up and get some of the money that we have.
When is that usually, when does that usually occur?
Um, I can check.
Usually, some, it's been, COVID has messed up the, the times. Um, it used to be like October, but then they switched it to spring, and now I'm not really sure
Yeah.
when it is. And we haven't been eligible anyway because we don't have an open space form.
Lowell built a fully ADA acceptable, um, play space, basically from the ground up. They took it completely obsolete. And it was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But the majority of it was paid for by park grants. Um, I just think that, you know, once we start talking about six-figure, you know, infrastructure for that sort of thing, we need to have state money. Like, it's tough to, it's tough to, you know, even our ARPA allocations are, are, are definitely a big head.
So I can talk with the, um, I'll, I'll, I'll talk with the Kids' Country Committee and, and find out where, where they want to, how they want to proceed with that. But I, I don't have a problem taking that lead if neither of you two have any.
No, I'm good with that. I, I think that that one is the one that's the most expensive of those on hand. We don't have a, a project right now. That could change in another, you know, year.
Right.
Um, uh, but, um, right now.
Well, since that, and I agree with you, and since that, that committee is just getting off the ground, at least we have, you know, I will, uh, again, if, if I can work with a town administrator to be able to look at what we need to do to get a park grant for it as well. And if, if we need to supplement, uh, if we have additional funds, we can supplement from ARPA. That's kind of my thought.
So the current deadline is July thirteenth.
Oh, good, okay.
For the current round.
But we have time to.
So if we can get that, the, you know, the open space.
Deadline is supposed to be June, not June fifteenth. We had planned to have that done by. Um, okay, so I'm just looking at these, um, for the other two. So I'd like to defer that one for now and go to the other two. Um, and I, I thought I saw forty K value for the repair maintenance.
That's what I estimated.
And, and ten K for the bandstand.
Ten K for the bandstand. And the ten K for the bandstand, uh, this is for, um, to try to get it up and running for Memorial Day.
And I, so I do want to point out that, that, that in the, the, um, um, the sheet, the, the, uh, the, uh, the sheet that I gave, the recap sheet, um, the Seminarian Parks is put in for a town meeting for ten thousand dollars for the bandstand, which is true.
And it didn't recap.
So I just don't want to make sure, I, I think that, you know, we need to find that money, whether or not it comes from ARPA or from, um, you know, the, the, uh,
The general.
The general. So maybe what we do is we allocate it, you vote and allocate it from another resource in ARPA, but hope that this free cash goes through, free cash allocation goes through. If it does, we pay for it with free cash, then we can relocate the ARPA when it's a little bit different.
So we need to have the forms go down for the allocation, reallocation, and the one I would take it from at least. I don't know what you guys are thinking, maybe other COVID-related expenses.
Bingo. That's exactly what I.
ARPA fifteen. The other thing, I don't know if you got, when you talked to Jennifer, did anybody bring up the records in the Hart Library? Because that was the other thing that I want to know, if that is, um, something that ARPA funds can cover.
Well, we talked about it under the capital plan.
Yeah.
Why that it could be brought up and by ARPA.
So.
So someone has that thought it was.
So can I, but can I, I just want to say something to the, the board, which is because of the amount of ARPA funds that we received, um, we basically, we, there is a mechanism by which we can spend these ARPA funds on any, any municipal purpose.
Oh, really?
Because we would just re, we would just say, we're going to allocate these funds for revenue replacement. And you can have up to three million dollars in revenue replacement. Well, you didn't get three million dollars in ARPA fund. You allocated it as revenue replacement. You put it into the general fund. You can spend it on whatever.
You're allowed to allocate, you are allowed to allocate projects under revenue replacement, general government, which gives the town a lot of flexibility to use the money on various projects. With something except.
Yes, just something.
So that's where I would like to see some.
So you, remember when I told you we were going to have some general buckets, but Fund FY twenty-four? That's where all the money that's left over, it's going to be general revenue replacement that we can do, we can.
Right.
So, because just looking at that, we had talked about capital planning, it was the police.
The police records in the, in the library. Yeah.
So if we can, um.
So again, I want to just pull it to what we're talking about. So it's the ADA compliance on, on town playground, which we've addressed. We're going to, we're going to defer that. Um, repairing maintenance needs of the town buildings and allocate, um, ten thousand for advanced in repairs.
And town banner building, sorry, buildings and sidewalks. Oh, sidewalk in front of town building?
Building and infrastructure. I mean, that, the, the sidewalks are generally treated as, as kind of like the roads. But that's not necessarily, I mean, we, we can, you know.
Check that out with Jennifer because I knew that for infrastructure, the only thing that we could do was water.
Yeah.
Um, when it was, we couldn't pay for it with this.
When we were first pointing this together, I, I'm pretty sure we had asked about the records.
We did.
And it was a firm no.
Right.
Yeah, I'll check with her again. I'll check with her to see if there's flexibility that she's, I think, I think.
I haven't followed new things coming out.
I was about to, I think the, the guidance, I think we, Townsend did a very good job by doing this very early and get, and got it allocated early. Uh, but I also think that that means that like some of the guidance has matured. And so, you know, there, there may, maybe the answers that you were given at the very beginning, there might be creative solutions to those answers now. So I could generally ask her again. And I can fill out the forms for those two. I'll fill out the forms for those two new projects, the reallocation forms, so we can put them on the board next, for the next meeting.
Okay, because I, I, I want to be able to, to know that the bandstand can continue there because I want to make sure that they're meeting their deadline for.
Absolutely.
Memorial Day.
Yep.
And that still gives us time to look at all the, those other two projects next meeting.
I'll, I will, I'll, either Sabrina or I will reach out to Jennifer about the, about the, the, um, uh, the, the, the digital, digital records.
Yeah.
Question.
But the, the, the one that I'm looking at is the, uh, repair and maintenance of the town buildings. And, and we can see if it includes the sidewalks, yes, but that would be part of what I would assume it would be needed repairs. All I'm looking at is somebody's name. In this building, this is what needs to be done so that we can put it on a timeline to, to get, to get it fixed.
Um, yeah, I'm just going to mention this because I don't know, I'm looking at the ARPA reporting. Um, and that's at nine thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars, and I won't know if that's all funds for CFS. Um, but we wrote that contract to be up to ten K, and then we would need a new contract with CSS. If, um, so look at that contract, and there may be a, a new one that needs to be, um, drawn.
All right, I'll touch base with Jennifer about that as well.
The other thing is under ARPA reporting, that if, um, our federal grant spending is more than seven hundred fifty, we have that special audit that needs to be done.
Yeah.
And that can be taken out of the ARPA fund. That was the intention.
Right. I think, I think, um, um, we're, we're going to, depending on when we test this, when the bridge money is, the year we're going to, we're going to be closed.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if that's going to be in FY, I mean, I might be able to split that over FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four, depending on when we get the invoices in.
Hmm.
From ShopCo.
And I'll touch base with you on our Wednesday meetings to see if I need to write anything or help you out with any of that. I am in contact with the bandstand committee.
Yeah.
Whatever it's called.
Me too.
I know, I know.
So all, all three sides of that little, uh, triumph, been in my office.
I just want to make sure that we, you know, we do our.
Yes, and you know, I think, I, I think it's on schedule Rogers, done a phenomenal job.
Agreed.
Kind of overseeing this project and, and trying to keep everybody straight. And I think we got the, we got some, um, the quotes to, to move forward with.
Yeah.
And I think the lead paint removal should be starting anytime now. That puts us.
Rogers shouldn't have any counseling license at the end of this. Um. Five point one, town administrator, updating reports.
Yeah, so I, I think most of what I've been working on was, is, has been budgetary work. Um, we are still, um, uh, in the process of, um, uh, working with the, the unions, uh, trying to wrap up the union negotiations. Likely going to request a, an executive session for next week. Um, would love a meeting to give you guys an update, official update on where we are.
Okay.
With that point, um, um, the RFPs for the town buildings are almost finished, and I should have them by next week to present to folks who's working.
When you see, what I've been doing for the five things?
Um, so.
I guess I can look online if they're posted there.
Yeah, um, there was, so I, I, I put it in, and then I got a call from um, the state or an email from the state saying that they wanted it in a different category. So I, I think it was originally, it originally was posted on, uh, uh, not this Monday, but the previous Monday. And so I, I, I think the bids are due, I think it was in for two weeks, so that would be next, next week.
And then next week, okay.
But I had several inquiries, at least for this package.
Good.
So that's good. Um, other than that, um, you know, that would be the end of my report, Mr. Chair.
Short and sweet, we like. Um, next step is five point two reports from boards, uh, from board liaisons, general government.
From the Energy Committee, we're, um, having a meeting coming up, the last meeting, um, we talked about, I forwarded it to Eric and, um, there is a new grant out. Um, so we're just making sure that we're eligible for, which is specifically designed for, um, hybrid or electric vehicles.
Yeah, I thought, so I did read it. I think they were trying to talk about chargers. But I did, I, you know, I, I had.
So hybrid, yeah, I think it charges us, I think.
Yeah, but I, I will double check.
Looking into that, if possible, um, for the facility vehicle, um, that we're hoping to, yeah, and see if we can get that under a grant. Um, they're also, um, still, um, working the green energy for the, some of the other projects that they're working on. And, um, uh, finding it, they had a meeting today, four o'clock, you saw the results of that meeting, and they came out. They, um, that, and announcements, do we do those now or later?
After.
Afterwards, right, okay. Now, see.
Um, for elected boards, um, I know that, um, I've been working, uh, with the water department on, we are going to be planning, or they are going to be planning a groundbreaking. Um, we did get a response from Senator Cronin in regards to, um, uh, his definitely wanting to do that, so we're looking somewhere in the, um, area of July. Um, on a Monday or a Tuesday, but more will be revealed when we find out more over time. But, uh, we will be inviting, you know, having some sort of, we want to get it earlier in the day. We're thinking around ten or eleven o'clock, so it doesn't get too, too hot. Um, and, uh, I think that's a, that's going to be a good, uh, a little press thing, not only for. Something short and sweet. Um, but, uh, that's something that, um, they've been looking at. Um, outside of that, I know it's in announcements and communications, but I know the planning board, um, is, uh, concerned in regards to membership. They're looking for people, um, to volunteer on the planning board. Um, we're also looking at the water department and the commissioners as well. They have a commissioner that's up. Um, in April, they need somebody, uh, they're, they've been running with only two commissioners. Um, I guess in general, uh, we do need some volunteers from, uh, from the town. If anybody can pull together a couple hours during the week to help us out with some of our boards and committees, I, I truly appreciate it because part of what we do here is relying upon, um, the citizens of the town to get together and help us out with these boards and committees so that we, we don't have one or two people doing all of the work. I think, um, the more people we have involved, the better, uh, the better options that we do have available for, for us all around. So I guess that's my pitch for, for a volunteer. Um, Veronica, you have anything for public safety?
Not really public safety, but other things that are been involved. The House in front. Um, I, I would love to request an email to board, um, a generic T A H T of TownsendMA.gov, um, for that. And then, um, also, uh, just the community one stop. Um, we put in a, um, preliminary, we do March seventeenth, uh, for the community space with Park and Ride. Um, we got that, uh, first round. They said that, um, we could consider this for a full application for the Commonwealth Wealth Spaces Program, which is part of the Mass Development website. However, we put in for a hundred sixty. Which is part of the mass development website, however, we put in for a hundred sixty-two thousand. Uh, we're gonna draw the fitness torch. This is again the transportation group, um, and because it's a fifty thousand maximum money. Which required for one-to-one wealth format. But we would need to put fifty thousand into. In order to, um, and and. We were looking at building the back, you're pretty much a shared street with base with first rejected. Plan, um, plan that was rejected because it was quote-unquote placemaking. So this is a placemaking grant, but it requires a fifty percent now. From the town. So, um. We haven't decided yet, but I think we could probably look at things and. Put it together, see if there's extra free cash or. Before that stabilization, but we will fly. Figure out where we're gonna get money from.
Okay.
So. That's it. All right.
All right, announcements, communications.
Yeah, um, this was sent to me, um, and I told them going forward, I'm gonna simply send them to you, but I did say that I'd read it this time. Uh, clear pads, uh, of veterans in New England, uh, which is located on Fort Devon. Each month, they have a women's uh wellness, uh, the first. Second Saturday of every month, they have a women's wellness retreat, um, but this Saturday, they're having a B I P visitors, actually two visitors. Uh, Major General Keppen and Command Sergeant Major Vellis. Both of them are from Massachusetts, they're two of the highest, one's a highest ranking officer, highest ranking enlisted females in the area. Um, they're coming down, they give a brief speech and have lunch for us. Um. The uh. First part, um, the. Um. Women's um wellness uh portion, which starts at ten, is open only to female veterans. But the uh B I P luncheon with the Command Sergeant, uh, excuse me, Major General and, uh. Um. Command Sergeant Major will be from twelve till one thirty and all related to that event.
Thank you. We think from you before we do anything else. Um. We have Martin here, and I forgot why we have that in there.
Um. That was good letter, please.
Yeah, that's a letter.
We've talked about it in the past, but yes, we're accepted.
Um, the planning board, I talked about the planning board, meeting members, um. They're they're very active, all our boards are very active right now, so. The more participation, the better. Uh, planning board notice of decision for five turnpike road, that was for additional parking, if I remember correctly, uh, with that. Um, we did receive a resignation from Jones, Jones Roy, uh, from the Conservation Commission. Um, so I know that they would be looking for, excuse me, an additional person.
We need to put out a post.
We gotta put a posting for that. Um. And uh we did get a um. A client advisory from town council on in regards to. Um. The Supreme Judicial Court ruling in regards to town's public participation policy for open meetings. Um. There was a case that was adjudicated, um, that saying that, um. That the. Well, we have been advised by our town council that we we should um probably not have um public comment. In uh an open climate, because that that does open up to um free speech, and people would be able to to be a little more specific in it, so. What I decided as the chair is that. Um, if anybody wants to speak on any issue, uh, to definitely talk with the town administrator, um, or the chair. Uh, and we can definitely put in an appointment time for them, so that we can discuss it together as a group. Uh, but to be able to keep it on the topic of of what the request is. Um. I think, um. The the decision basically was, you know, with, under the advisement of town council, this is the direction that the town should go in. Um, and I accepted that direction, and that's how we're gonna go. If any further questions, they can bring it to the town administrator, and I'll be more than glad to talk with anybody in regards to to our decision. This is not to shut down any public comment by any means, uh, but what this is basically. Uh, designed to do is so that we can be able to control the the conversation. You wanna talk about a particular topic, the board of selectmen is is always open to talk about any particular. On topic, but we we need to to be able to draw the parameters around them.
So we're not third in the queue. We've just made it the statement from the board that we are gonna. Shut down public comment.
I didn't say shut down, I said we're taking it off the agenda. An agenda item that has been on the agenda item.
And you don't think that's subject to the federal district?
I I I wouldn't think so, not for putting that you're taking things off the agenda, generally it's the chair of the agenda.
Uh, what do you wanna do, if you wanna vote, make a motion?
I make a motion that we remove public comment section from the. Uh, cha- um. Selectment meeting. Agenda.
Um.
Motion has been made in second, any more discussion, or as soon? Anyone else? Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
All those opposed? Hearing none? We are unanimous in that.
Yeah, and to, and just to reiterate, if if anyone wanted to add any questions or concern, feel free to call the office, it's a, we got a very detailed. Opinion from town council, so it's, you know, but I've already provided it to folks who are interested in it, but. That's why there's anyone else.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so, yeah, I think we're almost. Five point four, the next meeting we have is April fourth, twenty twenty-three. And uh five point five, I'll entertain more for that as well.
We'll make a motion that review and sign payroll and bill. Bills payable warrants auto stuff. Second.
Any discussion?
What?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Motion to.
Motion, I make a motion to adjourn. Nine. Seven to eight. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you very much.